We're going to get going, so we're going to stand for the flag salute.
Michael Richmond.
Here.
Richard Patterson.
Here.
Dan Adams.
Here.
Craig Palmasano.
Here.
John Pitts.
Here.
Stephen Giasecki.
Here.
Andrew Campbell.
Here.
Rich Tolson.
Here.
Patty Rosenberg.
Okay, this meeting is being held in accordance with New Jersey statute requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act sunshine law. Notice of this meeting has been advertised in the press and posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building. All applicants are hereby advised that if you receive board approval tonight, you must come forward and sign a form outlining the procedures for obtaining building permits and mercantile licenses. At the conclusion of your case tonight, please approach the board administrator Palma to sign the provided information sheet. We're going to do the approval of minutes for the meeting of February 27, 2025.
I'll make that motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, approval of decisions and resolutions, 12-2000. Okay, okay. Approval of decisions and resolutions, 12, 2025, Richard and Donna Bell. 13, 2025, Alexander Sitanelli. 14, 2025, Gail and William Levering. 15, 2025, Jamie Kushner and Ronald Nessbaum.
I'll make that motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Our first case is Stephen and Merle Silver, 108 South Lancaster Block 13, Lot 13, located in the S30 zoning district, seeking C variance relief for third floor greater than 50% of second floor, maximum eve height, dormer area, and potentially others for the construction of a new single-family home. Current on taxes, water and sewer payments, proof of advertising, and notification provided representative by Kevin Ballastieri.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, good evening, board members, board professionals. My name is Kevin Ballastieri. I'm an associate attorney with the law firm of Hank and Palladino, Weintraub, Bell, and Lebov in Atlantic City, and I have the pleasure tonight of representing Mary and Stephen Silver with respect to their application for 111 South Lancaster Avenue, which is Block 13, Lot 13, in the S30 zoning district. Joined this evening by my clients, as well as our architect, Dan DiAgostino of Plan Architecture, and our expert planner and engineer, John Barnhart of Ponzio's Office. We are here this evening seeking C variance relief to allow the Sellers to construct a new home on their property. I've reviewed and listened to some of the recent board hearings, and I know that there has been some talk about how a lot of the newer houses in Margate are starting to look the same, a lot of cookie-cutter designs. And this is a function really of the design constraints that homeowners have to navigate with the zoning ordinances. We are seeking variance relief to allow us to build a home with what, more unique, and we think beautiful architectural design that promotes light air and open space and is visually compelling without being obtrusive. From the outset, I want to stress, and you'll hear testimony to the effect, that the house we're proposing to build is not some 5,000, 6,000 square foot monstrosity. We're not looking to overbuild. We don't want a big bulky home. In fact, it's only, it only has 2,923 square feet of livable space, which is fairly modest by today's standards. And one of the most important variances, from my perspective, that we're seeking is the floor area ratio on the half-story. If we had maxed out our second story and made it as big as we could by right, we wouldn't need that variance. So, in a sense, we're actually asking for less in some respects than more, and you'll hear testimony about that. The proposed home will also be flood compliant, will be height compliant, roof pitch compliant, parking compliant, and it's going to bring all the existing non-conforming setbacks into conformity. So, from our perspective, this application is really about our client's desire to be able to make a different architectural design choice in line with their personal preferences and taste, and we believe that having a greater diversity and variety of homes in Margate will actually serve to benefit the community with no real detriment of any kind. Finally, I'm going to note that I think this particular street is a perfect place to grant this sort of variance. There was another home recently approved for construction that has a similar type of design, and therefore, we don't think this would be out of character with the surrounding properties at all. So, with that, I'd like to call my first expert witness, Dan DiAgostino, who is our professional architect.
Yeah, I was going to swear the architect in and Roger, and if Roger wants to do his report now or later, he can do it later, but Mr. DiAgostino, just give us your name and address for the record, business address.
Sure, it's Daniel DiAgostino, 267 Pascac Road, Townsville, Washington, New Jersey, 07676.
Okay, and I'm just going to get you sworn in. Please raise your right hand. You swear affirm the testimony you'll give this evening will be the truth?
I do.
Okay, and then I'll get Mr. McLaren sworn in for the, for the duration of the evening. Mr. McLaren, please raise your right hand. You swear affirm the testimony you'll give this evening will be the truth?
I do.
Okay, thanks.
I'll just go over the variances.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, we'd actually like the benefit of hearing from you.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. The initial report is February 25, 2025, and we are at the application of Stephen and Mary Silver, 108 South Lancaster Avenue, Block 13, Lot 13, located in the S30 zoning district. The required first floor as a minimum is elevation 13 plus 1 to the bottom, or 13 to the bottom, and building height is 30 feet above the first floor. Seeking C variance is planning on Xeno Report. This is a substantial benefit variance, or C2. Of course, they have to give some C1 testimony as well. Mr. Ballastieri gave the introduction, so I'll just go over the Schedule S30 on page two. Permitted uses are a single-family, permitted heights are two and a half stories, 30 feet above parking or first floor. Minimum lot area is 3,000 square feet. They are providing 3,125 square feet. Minimum width is 40 feet. They are providing 50 feet. Lot depth is not a requirement, but it is 62 and a half feet deep. They meet all the bulk requirements on page one. Turn to page two, and therein lies the variances based on their design. The third floor at a half-story must be contained within the roof of the second story. It's outside the roof, and again, once you see the architectures, you'll see why, and their testimony will provide what's needed for their proofs. Third floor, half-story area, 50% of the floor area below. They're at around 62.3%. Again, their testimony will show that the second floor is smaller than it is allowed to be, and that'll be their argument. Roof eve height, because the, the third floor is actually pushed towards the back of the house, so the roof eve is at the roof of the third floor, so it's required to be no more than two feet, and they're around seven feet, one inches, all four sides. Again, they, they will provide testimony to that. And the dormer area, the entire third floor is basically a dormer because it's above the second floor roof, so that's 100%. And again, I think the applicant will provide testimony, and the visuals will support their application and show you why these variances are variances. It's not the typical Margate house. So, I will conclude my report with the right to chime in later. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. All right, Mr. DiAgostino, would you please give the board the benefit of your experience as an architect?
Certainly. I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey, also New York, Pennsylvania, Delaware, working on Connecticut and Florida. I received my degree in architecture from New Jersey School of, New Jersey School of Architecture at NJIT, 2006. I became licensed in 2010. I am doing testimony once a week for the last 10 years across the state. My license is in good standing. I am considered an expert in the field of architecture except by my wife, who can test most of that. I'm also on the zoning board in my own town, so I can empathize with you, and I will speak fast.
All right, thank you. At this time, I'd like to offer Mr. DiAgostino as a professional architect for the board consideration.
Yeah, great.
If you're going to turn around at all, you could use that microphone there as well.
And is it on?
Yeah.
Perfect. Before we begin your testimony, along with this application, we submitted a variance plan consisting of six pages, which were the site plan, four pages of floor plans, and a page of elevations. At this time, I'm going to ask that they be marked as A1 through A6, just for identification purposes, so when you're referring to a page, you know, just, just.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Do you want me to mark it physically, or we'll just reference it?
It'll be one through six. We can do it at the end. Mr. DiAgostino, can you just give us an overview of the architectural plan?
Sure. So, started the project, first thing we did was our zoning analysis. We, the, the code is very clear. It outlines all of the bulk requirements, seems to be falling. We outlined all of the bulk requirements, and as you could see, there were a number of existing non-conformities. We actually prepared this diagram on the left side of the cover sheet. That shaded area, these are all of the non-conformities that exist on the property that we're bringing into conformance. As it was reported in the planner's report, we actually comply with all of the bulk standards, which is the one thing that we always want to do whenever we're proposing a brand-new home. When we started to get into the design of the house, the most important thing to my clients wasn't the house itself, it was the outside spaces, the recreational areas. So, I'm going to jump to the third page of this sheet, which would be considered Exhibit A3. What you're going to see here is the bedroom level of the structure. It's characterized by the balcony. There's a balcony that stretches the whole front of this structure. That's giving outdoor space above grade to these two bedrooms at the front of the home, okay? Again, everything that I'm describing is, as of right, and it complies. When you get to the level above that, so this will be Exhibit A4, it's VA 203 in the set in front of you, what you're going to notice is that, and there probably isn't much precedent for this in town at all, the upper floor balcony is about double the depth of the floor below. That's that balcony called 206. So, that's a 12-foot balcony on the upper floor, whereas the floor below it, we've got a 5-foot 3 balcony, so it's a little bit more than double the, the area. When we get to the upper floor, which is the story where the master suite is located, and I'm referring to Exhibit A5 at this point, that's Sheet VA 303. We, by math, by calculating the math, the 50% requirement of this floor is determined by the floor below it. And in stepping back that second floor and reducing that area, which is considered livable area, by about 400 square feet, it imposes this variance that we're seeking here tonight. Had we built out the second floor to the level that anybody normally would, I hate to say normally because that sounds like a sleight, but if the outdoor space wasn't as important to them, we wouldn't be here for this, and what we're talking about today. When I, I should share the, just a basic walkthrough of the elevations, and I can depict in one of the side elevations exactly where we're seeing this at most indicated. It's on Exhibit A6, VA 500. It's the side view. So, what you'll see on the side view is that this, the, the end of this vertical siding, if this had continued up and the roof continued this way, we'd actually have no variances. And I'm going to actually, as an exhibit, show you a, a drawing that I prepared to illustrate exactly this. What we did was we went to the neighborhood, we modeled the structures in the adjacent area. Everything's to a relative scale, pretty accurate. What you can see here, I shouldn't say pretty accurate, is accurate.
I'm not sure if everyone, I'm going to hold it up a little bit.
So, what we're looking at is our structure here and the compliant version of the structure there. This would meet all of the bulk regulations. What you're hopefully seeing when you see this, or understanding when you see this, is by reducing the area here and by pulling the dormer portion back, not having these roof lines, we actually create a structure that has a lot less mass on the street line. We didn't, I mean, the byproduct of this is that the neighbor to the left of us is now going to still have views where they otherwise wouldn't have. That's not the reason we did it, that is the byproduct. Here's another view. This is actually from the east, showing the same comparison. On the top is our proposal. On the bottom is a compliant version, 100% compliant per the code. And then lastly, a west view looking towards the beach, you'll, you'll see the same again. The architecture that we're, we're proposing here is, it's very light. We want it to be unique. We're not looking for the shore box that's got the same 5-on-12 pitch to maximize area. We're trying to do something unique, something that hopefully upholds the street line, and then seeing a little bit more of these contemporary homes is something that a lot of towns are welcoming, and it's nice to see them as we drove around today. Certainly.
Can you tell me how large the third floor deck is?
The upper, on the roof?
Yeah, the top deck.
I believe so.
Is it like 20 by 30, or?
So, on the right side, it's 16 feet, feet deep. On the left side, it's 21 foot 2, and clear across, it's 22 feet.
Okay, thank you. 21 by, 22 by 15, pretty much. That's a very big deck.
Yeah, on the upper level.
So, on the second floor, without getting a variance help, much bigger, could you have made that?
So, the, we did the math, and we, we prepared it. We would have been able to go from the 817 square feet there up to 1,077. So, that's a.
What would you have done, pushed, you got rid of some of the deck in the front?
Correct.
Okay. On that deck right now, is how wide is that deck?
So, it's, the depth of it on the inside is 12 feet, and clear across, it's 25.
Right.
So, I, I could indicate, actually, if I just pulled this forward by 6.2, that would, that would bring the third floor up into, to conformance.
So, in order to make the third floor comply, you would have to, on the second floor, you would have to basically add another 100 square feet?
Hmm, closer to 200 square feet.
200 square feet?
Correct.
Right, okay.
We, when we created that upper floor, we did it based on the largest that we could be, which is the floor below it.
Right, okay. I've got a question for Roger. Is the reason that you're saying that the third floor roof is a dormer because it doesn't go all the way over to?
It's not coming out of the second floor roof. The whole thing's, there is no second floor roof.
Right.
So, by definition, it's a dormer.
Does everybody understand that on the board?
Or a full third floor, basically, right?
Right.
Full third floor. Would they put them all all the way around, without using the inch and, the 18-inch?
Right.
So.
Bringing the rafters down to the 18-inch line.
Right, right. It, it, so, it's not entirely all around that height. If, if we, this right here complies, this portion of it, however, simply, if we put a line like that, came to a peak, and did this, and didn't change a single thing about this application, it would comply, because it would be within the roof line.
Wait, can you say that again?
Yeah, certainly. I'd be happy to. So, if I started a roof here, I didn't change the floor plan at all. I came up to this point here, built to here, stopped the living space there, continued with storage attic, which is not habitable, to artificially create these dormers, it would comply. We just didn't build that. We didn't build the attic space.
You built the, you had the deck instead?
Yes, yes.
Sir, what?
I mean, is that correct? It's three stories.
My, my, my point is, when I look at the right side elevation up against the house that's closer to Atlantic Avenue, they're going to be looking at a 39-foot solid straight wall, straight up, whereas it normally would have been, I guess, 28 feet, and then a roof, and then the third floor would have been inside. But that's what, that's what the 18-inch, what do you call it?
To the plate.
Yeah, 18-inch from the sill plate.
Yeah.
That's, that's why we put that dormer in there, to try to bring the mass down. Instead of having, on the, like, the left picture there, you have up there, the left one, that's, that's a solid wall. That's, that's a high wall, also, straight up. There's another one concern anymore, because it's right up against a neighbor's house.
Right.
Are you, are you, are you talking about conceptual elevation number two?
Yes.
But, so, so, that's totally, what's the, what's, on that, what is that, is that a big giant, what is that, that?
It's a window.
That siding, is that a window?
It's a window. It, it's a window. There's a stair behind that, and it's a window. So, you know, in the same way that the roof lines are going to break up a facade, that's what we tried to do with these windows. We didn't just put a sheer wall of stucco or
Right.
siding. And, and you know, the, if, if I may just address your concern, I understand, I understand the intent of the code, and frankly, if, if we were to meet the code, and if we were to revise this, that would introduce an eve that projects out at this level, and it would not be any less mass. In fact, it would be, and again, the comparison, just, I'm 100% clear on your statement, it's 100% correct. From here to here is different from here to here. However, from here to here, and from here to here, this is actually two feet lower than that, to the highest point. You're getting this, this break in the facade, but we're introducing other breaks. For instance, right here, with the actual sheer part of the building stops a full story lower than if we were to go with an alternate version. I'm not saying that in a taunting way, I'm saying that in an illustrative way, that we, yeah, we've got more height here, but we're significant, significantly less, closer to the street line.
So, one more time, that, on conceptual elevation, right side, number two.
Yes.
That big, that's all, that's a window, that big black thing that kind of?
It's a, yes, it's a, it's actually a very large window. It's maybe 12 feet wide by maybe 20 feet tall, and behind that is a stair.
Yeah. You mean an open space or an actual glass window?
It's a glass window. It's a glass, it's broken up into mullions.
Yeah.
Actually, here's a better, this is a better picture of it, if you see it right here. And what that is, is again, we're trying to make these spaces feel lar, like, outside and open. That's a staircase right behind us. It's not like there's a living room that somebody's going to be peering down into. This is an, an all-house stair that will bring light in on each of the levels.
And, and that window, like, it looks like?
By the way, that, like, budget, once we get the bu, I'm almost certain that's the, the first thing that goes.
So, so the window, it looks like, does that go all the way through at some point? You see what I'm saying?
Through the house?
Yeah.
No, it's, oh, it's just, it's just at this wall. In fact, maybe if I indicate on the floor plan. So, I'll walk you through the, the upper level, for instance. You come, this is an open floor plan. It's got a kitchen in the back left. It's got a dining area with a little office bench, living room with a fireplace. On the other side of that fireplace is the stair that brings you to the upper level. So, from here to here is the glass. And again, that's the, we intentionally put it there, so it's bringing natural light into the hall on the, the level below and up to that, that upper story, not going the wrong way.
Question. You just suggested that once you see the budget, that may change.
The window may change.
The window may change, become what?
Well, it would become lesser eve windows, probably the outer.
Solid wall.
No, it would certainly be windows, but at the very least, it wouldn't be, it would not be.
It'd be more of a sheer wall than what you're showing us here.
It would be the same plane. This is, this is something.
Doesn't bode well.
Short leg.
Well, the timing wasn't great.
We do that to everybody.
Thanks. Who's got the remote? So, at the very least, it would be here, and here, and here, and here, and another one there, and there, so.
And I would say, if that's a major concern, we would be willing to make that a condition of approval, that it not be a sheer wall.
I would love that.
You gotta get sworn in. You gotta get sworn in. Need to be sworn in.
Sure. My name's Stephen Silver.
And you're, you're the homeowner?
I'm the homeowner.
Please raise your.
108 South Lancaster.
Okay, please raise your right hand. You swear affirm the testimony you'll give will be the truth?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Yes. I'll, I'll speak just for this. That's a very important aesthetic look to it, and either we can do it one of two ways. We can either make it a condition precedent to the, to the variance, or we can give an affidavit that we will install that window. It's a very important aesthetic to us. So, while we're respectful of, of our, of our architect, and he's trying to be respectful of our budget, if that was, we have no problem with that, with that stipulation, okay? So, that's what I want to say.
Okay.
Great. While he's kind of getting his things together, I do want to say, you know, a lot of this is about, about design choice. And, and again, you know, we've touched on this a few times, but the Sellers are not looking to be greedy here. I know this sounds like a lot of variance relief, but when you look at the profiles, side by side, what we're proposing is not more obtrusive, in fact, in a lot of ways, it's less obtrusive. We're not maxing this out. We're not asking for every square foot we can get and then coming back for variances. So, I want to address that, and then also the design aesthetic. I know, you know, sometimes these newer homes can look sterile in some way. That's not the intent here. There's been a lot of time and effort and thought and craftsmanship that's gone into this plan, both by the clients in connection with their architect. And, and again, we, we surely do believe that this is unique and adds something to the area. So, yeah, now you're set back up, yeah, turn this back over to you.
I have a question.
Certainly.
So, is, is it like a curtain wall?
Yeah, I mean, you could, you say that.
I mean, it, because it looks like you have like.
Correct.
And non-operable windows.
I mean, by definition, this will not be structural. So, the struc, there will be a portal, they call it a portal frame, and they call it a curtain wall because it's like a curtain.
And it, it's all cetera glass, or some of it, you know, like some kind of obscure glass?
So, we were playing with the idea of some fritting on it, so that it mimics the way that the light casts on the ocean, like, how it, like, speckles like that. That's how you got some of those triangle shapes. That's what we were planning to do. It's artistic, it's an artistic expression.
It is artistic. Can't go up and down those stairs, but in your 90.
Well, we'll design a nice 90 to go, go along with it.
One of those things that automatically changes, but anyway. So, one of the things we're concerned about is those large slat walls, right?
Yeah.
So, I think you've done a good job with the, the windows. What are some of the other architectural elements on that side of the building?
Sure. So, we're, we've currently spec'd Florum panels, which is meant to mimic stucco. The reason we were doing that is because we didn't necessarily want to do a stucco home, because those generally feel heavy, but we're actually exploring limestone finish stucco. I'll walk you through these here, yeah. We just did a, a driving tour through Mary's, she relived her history as a Philly gal here, but she also walked me through all the newer homes. So, there's the Florum panel, or potentially limestone finish stucco. There's a koia wood, or a comparable type of wood. You'll notice that there's actually two densities to that wood, a, a smaller slat and a wider slat, and then beyond that, we've even changed the orientation to create it a little bit more slendering. We've concealed all of the gutters. There's a single downspout that'll get connected underground. On the opposite side of the house, we're dealing with a double-tone travertine finish here. We're, again, anywhere that there's not a window, but to give it to the appearance of it wrapping, we want these layers. We've done that. We've got some built-in planter areas to, to bring a little bit of organic nature to this. The, the goal is to feel like you're in a grotto on the, on the upper floor. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. DiAgostino, before we get to Mr. Barnhart?
If, on your testimony, that if you built this to where you could on the second floor, that one front deck would be reduced. I know that width of it remains the same, but the depth of it would obviously change. It would go from what to what?
It would go from.
As proposed to, it's almost cut and hand, right?
I would like to give you the exact number.
So, you're asking if we maxed out the second floor, what would it be? I have that at one thousand seventy-seven square feet, and it's currently eight hundred and seventeen square feet as opposed. Oh, just a deck, I'm sorry.
We would be reducing the second floor deck from twelve feet in depth down to five foot three and a half.
I mean, honestly, for the, um, light air and open space, to me, it's a new brainer, that you would, you know, have the bigger deck, and, you know, allow another hundred square feet.
So, there are sections of the country that actually write their code like this, to prevent sheer walls. So, we, they do a diagram showing how the, the higher you get, the more your house, if every house did this, it would actually be a very well-planned community, because that would actually preserve views along the corridor.
Anybody else, uh, from the board?
Uh, the pool equipment in the garage, suspended facility in the garage, is that an issue?
Yeah, the flood damage prevention ordinance requires all equipment, mechanical equipment, to be at the first floor level or higher, if it's in the house.
Okay, so then it'd have to go up a story?
We're outside the house somewhere.
Okay, we can figure that out.
That adjustment we could make is a condition of approval?
For sure.
If approved?
For sure.
Not a problem.
Anything else?
Yeah, I have a question. Um, what's the space between your pool and the back fence?
What is the dimension? Six feet.
Okay, 'cause on, on the first floor plan, it says five feet.
So, it's measured on the site plan, six feet from the, uh, property line to the, the water, uh, so basically the stone, coping stone. And then this is just the dimension to the deck. So, there's a foot between the deck, that's not, um, this might be a little unclear. That five-foot dimension is the distance from the coping stone to the deck, which means there's a foot between the deck and the property line.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And we have, uh, Roger, we have no requirement for setback from the house to the pool?
Three foot.
Which we comply with.
And, and listen, I didn't belabor the point, because when you're tearing a home down and building a new home, you're expected to comply with setbacks. But I do wanna point out, and then if you could, uh, currently, if you look at the existing setbacks versus what's required versus what exists, uh, can you tell us just a little bit about the rear yard setback?
Yeah, I'd be happy to go through, through each of them.
Just briefly, yeah.
So, currently, the front yard setback for the building, uh, is required to be fourteen point six five, the current one is fourteen point six eight, so it complies.
So, that one complies, yeah.
The next one, you're required to have a front yard to the porch of six point six six, that's the average, it's only got five point oh nine, so that's a variance that we're resolving.
And what are we proposing?
We're proposing nine point three eight.
So, more than required?
Yes.
Okay.
The rear yard, you're required to have twelve point five, it currently only has three inches, and we're complying with that. Um, minimum.
The building?
No, yeah.
The principal structure is two inches.
They're connected, so yes.
Thank you.
Um, the minimum side yard is eight feet required. Currently, it's only three inches, and then three feet and four, three feet, four inches. We're gonna comply with that, with, with some, even.
So, the point that I, I just wanted to illustrate is substantially improving a lot of these existing non-conformities, is that right?
Yeah, entirely. In fact, even just the, the total side yards, you're supposed to have eighteen feet, that's eighteen feet of airspace. It's only three point three right now, and we're complying with the eighteen. You know, one after the next, it's, it's a great improvement. Driveway setback, we're improving the driveway setback.
Can I ask you a question on that, please?
Yes.
I'm reading in here, the driveway curb cut total isn't provided yet, though.
It would be eighteen feet, right?
Yes.
I thought that'd be a question for Mr. Barnhart, when I bring him up here. But if you can answer it, go ahead, Dan.
I believe that, I don't, actually don't see a dimension on, we didn't do the civil plan on it, but.
It, it's gotta be eighteen feet.
Will comply. Will comply.
It'd be eighteen feet.
I, I was gonna say, whatever it is, we comply with.
But don't worry about it.
Again, not a problem.
Unless you're gonna make it there.
Any further questions for Mr. DiAgostino, before I bring up Mr. Barnhart?
So, what is that clearance between the water's edge and the house? It's not shown on here. It needs to be three feet, can you make?
So, we've got five feet. We've got four feet to the backside of the coping stone, and another foot to the coping stone. Correct.
Okay, anybody else?
No.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, with your permission, next I'm gonna bring up our professional planner and engineer, Mr. John Barnhart. I believe he is very familiar to this board, but if you'd like, I can take him through his qualifications.
I think we can accept Mr. Barnhart. Um, John, when you're ready, just give us your name and business address for the record.
Sure. John Barnhart, office address, four hundred North Dover Avenue, Atlantic City.
And please raise your right hand, you swear affirm the testimony you'll give this evening will be the truth?
I do.
Mr. Chairman, we accept his credentials as an engineer and planner.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Barnhart, can you please take us through the application from the perspective of a professional planner and engineer?
Sure. Um, I think the, uh, our, the architect on the project did a great job explaining the project and his goals in the, in, in developing the building as it is, but, um, when we looked at it from a planning perspective, we believe that this, that the deviations that are being asked for this evening really do go to the heart of a couple of purposes of zoning the municipal land use law, um, and which, which is what justifies these variances. The first that I, that I wanna discuss is that, um, is the, uh, creation or preservation of airlight and open space, which is a purpose of zoning. What the architect did in this, in this specific design is, um, create a number of different facade depths along the front of the building, and different deck, the deck depths along the front of the building. So, although this is a two-and-a-half-story building, three-story by definition, because of the square footage of the second floor, there is going to be a lot of, not only airlight and open space around the building, because every single one of the bulk standards complies, which is very important in this application, um, you know, we are working with a blank slate. We do have a, we do have a vacant lot, per se, once the building's torn down, and so, our, this architectural team did not push the envelope. They did not ask for a front yard setback, they did not ask for side yard setbacks, they did not ask for rear yard setbacks, they're complying with building coverage, they're complying with landscape coverage, both in the aggregate and in the front yard. The only deviations that they're asking for are related to the architectural design of the building. And those deviations aren't to the benefit of more living space, or more bedrooms, or, or the things that you might think a, a, an applicant would be asking for. When he's asking for more square footage on the third floor than, than is permitted, or when he's asking to go to a high, for a, a greater dormer size, he's asking for, he's asking for those deviations to allow for the architectural design to be creative, to be artistic, a, as he explained. So, this design, we believe, and if you look at some of the perspectives as compared to the neighboring properties, we believe not only does go, preserves airlight and open space in and around the property, but actually improves upon it, especially at the front setback, or especially at the front, I should say, from the street. Um, there is a lot of openness in the front of this building. Um, our client had a great interest in having this home, home, this summer home, with a lot of outdoor living space. You come here on the weekends, um, you don't wanna be inside, you wanna be outside. Um, it's not a, it's not an overly si, overly large lot. Uh, the building, as, um, as Mr. Ballistieri mentioned, is, for a beach block building, is less than three thousand square feet. It is not a large home, um, but they were very, very interested in trying to create a lot of interesting outdoor living space, and at the same time, uh, create a unique architectural appeal. Interestingly enough, when I first looked at these plans, and I saw that side wall, there was a, a sheer wall, or whatever you wanna call it, um, it was of, you know, I'm, I'm here a lot, it was a concern. But when you actually look at the detail of it, and as it was explained, and then actually, as you heard, our client actually be willing to commit to it, again, the architectural design comes into play, the use of glass and the use of different materials is actually now creating some depth into that wall. So, while that wall is vertical, it's really changing the character of that wall, so that it does not give you the appearance of a blank-sided wall, or stucco wall for, uh, three and a half, or four stories, uh, above the ground. So, we believe that for all of those reasons, um, airlight and open space is clearly preserved with this application, which is a purpose of zoning that advances the municipal land use law. I think probably the strongest argument we have with this application, um, is the purpose of zoning, which states creation of a desirable visual environment through creative design techniques and so, good civic design and arrangement. I'll go back to what I said, there are no bulk requirements that are being, um, deviated from with the application. We are talking about, uh, we're talking about the height, the size of a dormer, which really goes hand in hand with the, with the, uh, plate height on the, on the walls and the, and around the side, and then part, part of the rear of the building. Um, we're talking about a square footage of third floor, which, as was already reported, is, I'm gonna say, an artificial number because of the fact that they are, we're essentially penalizing ourselves by reducing the interior living space of the second floor. If we were to max that living space out, that, that variance would go away. So, what you have is, you have a situation where we have an architect that I've not worked with before, he's kinda new, new to town, has a lot of really interesting and different ideas, um, and is in, and is interested in creating, um, an architectural piece on this beach block of Margate that doesn't exist. Um, will it, will it be out of character with the neighborhood? I would say, no, it will not be out of character with the neighborhood, um, 'cause there's a relatively similar, more modernistic style house that's actually just going under construction across the street from this home. So, um, this is a very, very beautiful block in the community, um, but we think that the, that the visual of this home, um, will create some real interest for the block, it'll create some real interest for people that are walking to the beach, um, and it's, it's being done in a fashion that we, we believe does not create any real negative impacts because of how much thought has been put into the design of each one of the elements of the structure. We also have to talk about the negative criteria in justifying the variances. The first prong being is there a substantial detriment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance. I would argue that there is not. While we are deviating at that upper level, it is with purpose. It does not, it does not provide any additional benefit to our client, other than architectural appeal. Um, and for those reasons, we believe that there is not a substantial detriment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance. Um, and the second prong of the negative criteria is, is whether there is a substantial detriment, um, to the public good. You know, again, it's our opinion that because of the architectural interest of the building, although we're deviating with regard to the eve height, uh, and we're deviating with regard to the, um, the dormer, and, and the other items that are listed in Mr. McLaren's report, um, we believe that the architectural interest of this building, um, well outweighs any potential neg, negative impacts of, um, of deviating from those standards, which would, um, satisfy the negative criteria, or I should say, both prongs of the negative criteria. This is one of those cases where you have to balance, you know, what the impacts are versus what the value of an interesting, very artistic, unique, and creative building design is. Um, you know, my opinion, you know, everybody has a different opinion of, of what's beautiful in a building. My opinion is, whether you love or hate this building, it's a very, very interesting building, and I think it truly would be an asset to Margate, um, because of the fact that there are no other variances being requested, other than to create this architectural feature.
That's really all I have. I have no further questions. Anybody else?
Yeah, I've got a question, uh, I guess, Roger, this is for you. Third-floor decks may not occupy more than fifty percent of the area of decks below? Is that another picture? Not on a beach block.
Not on a beach block.
Thank you very much. Okay, um, anyone from the public like to speak?
Sure, just give us your name and address, and I have to swear you in.
Adam Green, three seventeen North Nassau Avenue.
Three seventeen. Uh, Mr. Green, please raise your right hand, you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
Thanks.
Um, I just wanted to speak a little bit, uh, on behalf of my friends, uh, Mary and Stephen. Mary's been coming to this area for, how long, Mary? Long time? Fifty, fifty years, so she's not, uh, you know.
Where's she at the door?
Well, I know she does, she looks very young. Um, but yeah, she's been here a long time. She's not just cruising in here from, you know, from out of town, trying to build, um, you know, the biggest house she possibly can. And, uh, I've been here since I was four years old, I've seen the faces of Margate change. I used to ride my bike to Michelle's to buy two cinnamon buns for sixty cents. Do you guys remember, uh, Michelle's Bakery, uh, across from Castles? But, you know, as a, a local, um, I drive around, and I see things that belong and that don't belong, and from my perspective, I'm an art director by trade, so I dr, I drive around, and I judge all the buildings as I, as a, and I decide which ones stay, which ones go in my mind. But for, you know, really, like, you know, to, to be totally coy, um, and they, you know, and, you know, I probably shouldn't be this coy, but when a shoe be rolls into town, you're like, what's in it for them, what's in it for us? And I don't really feel like they're asking for anything that, uh, is for them. They're trying to do something outward, that's a beautiful attempt. The renderings are, they're gorgeous. I don't know if there's any 3D renderings in here, but there's beautiful, uh, you know, there's, it's, it's quite striking, even more, you know, it's, you know, if you have that, it would be awesome to share, 'cause it might actually, uh, it might actually, uh, help visualize this. But, um, again, I don't really feel it's a, it's more of a give than a take. I mean, it's a beautiful statement. It's not like they're trying to build the biggest house. They're quiet, respectful, they're helpful people, they're, they're members of the community that we would welcome. Um, you know, they're, uh, you know, they're not, uh, you know, it's, look, you know, over, certain, uh, certain characteristics of this town are less, uh, compelling to me than they used to be. And if we, uh, I, I, this gets, uh, this locals' stamp of approval, if it means anything, which it probably doesn't, but, uh, they're great people, and I think they're trying to do a, a really, uh, it's a killer project. I mean, it's, it's, it's beautiful. And I can't speak to, uh, some of the things that felt like they're sticking points, but, um, yeah, but that's pretty much it.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Okay, public portion's closed.
Mike, I have one question.
Go ahead.
How are we going to put in about that wall not being able to be changed?
With the win, with the windows, we'll make it a.
Condition.
A condition of approval, and I'll state it when, when we frame the motion, and I'll put it into words a little better than I stated, probably.
Anybody else?
Do you have anything else?
No, I, I could give you a big closing statement, but I would just be repeating myself, um, and wasting your time. So, we really appreciate your attention and your consideration. We think it's a beautiful project, and, um, thanks again.
Okay. Um, okay, so it's gonna be a C variance application, and I'll summarize the C variances and the conditions. Then we'll need a motion and a second, and a roll call vote. The third floor, uh, has to be per ordinance completely, completely within the roof, the second floor, and, and they're non-compliant in terms of that. The third half-story, we heard a lot of testimony about that, has to be fifty percent of the second floor, and they're at sixty-two point three percent. The roof eve height, uh, is non-compliant, and then that dormer area, and, you know, nearly a hundred percent of the, the floor area is a, is a dormer for the third floor. So, those are the four variances. The conditions I will put in there that, on that, uh, elevation two, shown on, on the plans, that they'll install the windows as represented during the course of the hearing. And then I'll also note that the pool equipment, they'll make that comply with the ordinance, you can work with Mr. McLaren to, to get, to make sure that's in the right location. Then the standard conditions that we put in every resolution, the applicant will comply with any representations it made during the course of the hearing. Uh, anything else in Mr. McLaren's report, unless otherwise addressed, subject to any outside approvals that may be required.
I'll make that motion. Accepted.
Michael Richmond?
Okay, so, maintaining a five-twelve pitch, um, I know a lot of the, um, thought behind, uh, you know, having the eve height was the, you know, having a mass, but in this case, I really don't think that, the way this is designed, especially with that window, I really feel like that does not comply. I mean, that doesn't, um, you know, the, with the window and the way the siding is, I, I don't really see that as an issue. If the second floor was maxed out, then I would have an issue with, obviously, you know, making the third floor bigger. But it's not maxed out, and what they're doing to replace that is putting a twelve-foot deck in, which allows for a lot of open air and light for the neighbors. Um, I mean, the third floor deck is, is big. For a beach block house to be under three thousand square feet is really unusual. They comply with everything else. I think for this location, especially with the house that we approved. I think for this location, especially with the house that we approved a little while ago with the flat roof that's going up across the street, I think that this house fits in, will fit in more in this location with the neighborhood, and I think a lot of thought went into the house, and I'm going to approve it.
Richard Patterson?
Yeah, this is one of those cases where I had a lot of concerns coming into the case, but I'd like to commend the presentation, I mean, it really, I think you guys all did a really good job. Mr. Barnhart really knocked my socks off. I'm, I'm looking at the third floor of that master bedroom suite, modest is, is, the modestness of it surprises me, I mean, I, I was shocked that it was more than 50% of the floor below, because it's really a small, I mean, my house has a bigger bedroom suite than that does, and it's not a beach block house. Every one of my questions was more than answered, again, I, I think the presentation was spectacular, and I approve the application.
Dan Adams?
Yeah, I'm going to echo, echo Mr. Richmond and Mr. Patterson on the comments. I really have to say the architect did an outstanding job, and the uniqueness of this with the open spaces is outstanding, and the fact that you're going to use the open space for outdoor living is even better. And being from the fireside, anytime there's another deck available, it's another place of egress to get in and out in the event of a fire, so I think you did a great job, and everyone did a good presentation, and I'm going to vote for this.
Craig Pomisano?
It is, it is a nice looking home. It's changing style, and recently we approved one, it's similar to that, but it was only two stories, that one, not three stories. This one here, it's an overly large deck on the third floor, it's a humongous deck, and I'm wanting, I want to stay with the eve heights and keep the overall mass a little bit down, and I, I, I'm going to not approve.
Stephen Giacchi?
I believe that everything does meet the, the, the positive criteria for the C variance, and I want to mimic what everyone else's, what Rich and Chairman have said, so I approve.
Drew Campbell?
I too echo the thoughts of the other board members. You articulated this design in a way that made me and helped me better understand what you were doing, you did a phenomenal job with that, and I'm going to approve.
Rich Tolson?
Couple observations first. We often are presented with an argument that if we built to the ordinance on the second floor, would it, it'd met the criteria. And I have, I struggle with that, when we hear that, but the fact that you did it, if you did that and extended the living space, you would have a, let me see where it's, a four-foot deck, three-foot deck, is absurd, but I, I just offer that as an observation. One other observation before my final comments, Mr. Barnhart, I think you described it as unique but consistent with the neighborhood, and I struggle with those two things happening simultaneously, but that's just an observation. That being said, it has, the presentation improves greatly the existing non-conforming issues of the property, the architectural appearance of it, although not completely unique, is certainly aesthetically more appealing than what's around it. Creative design techniques that were described lead me to believe that this should be approved, and I do so.
Patty Rosenberg?
I too have struggled with this one. I walked down the street to go to the beach, and I was always charmed by the house that was there. I never realized how, how far back it went though. And I think, I will echo that it's a unique design, that you are taking advantage of all the outdoor spaces and allowing light and air. And the fact that the rear facade has different, you know, it's not just one straight across design, it has a setback, you know, gives that area, even though it goes up three stories plus, it, it does give it interest. I just question how you can have a house with five bedrooms and have a laundry room that's in a closet, and the only, that's my only question here. Is like, who's doing the laundry in that place? No. Need what? You need, you need the laundry room, if indeed you are occupants of the house. Anyway, but I, I'm going to approve it because I think a lot of thought did go into this, and, and to have all those open spaces, just, you know, that I think there's a sound ordinance after 10 o'clock, so like no wild parties on the third floor, yeah.
John Pitts?
I approve.
Okay, motion carries, eight in favor and one opposed.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Our next case is Michael and Mandy Dorfman, 206 North Brunswick Drive, block 502.04, lot 39.01, located in the S30 zoning district, seeking C variance relief for rear-facing third-floor deck, and potentially others for the construction of a third-floor deck in the rear of the property. Current on taxes, water, and sewer payments, proof of advertising, and notifications provided represented by Eric Goldstein.
I'll just say, yes, they, they were in here last summer for an application for the two and a half stories over parking for a lot less than 40 feet, I think they're a fraction less than 40 feet, so they got that variance. Originally, they were going to seek the third-floor deck in the rear of the house, but they, they pulled that in order to get the other variance, so here we are again to get the third-floor deck at the rear of the house, and by definition, it's a variance.
Thank you, Mr. McLaren and Mr. Chairman, Eric Goldstein, on behalf of the applicants, Michael and Mandy Dorfman, we've reviewed Roger's report. You'll recall, this lot is three inches short of being 40 feet wide, so we needed a variance to get started on the construction. At the time we came in last year, property owners weren't sure what they wanted to do about the deck being in the front or the back. They've since discussed this with their neighbor. I sent over to Leo and to Roger and to Mr. Richmond, copy of the letter from the rear yard neighbor, who, I think everybody should have a copy of that, is in favor of this, couldn't be here tonight, but wanted to express that they're the only people affected by this variance, and are in favor of the Dorfman's getting. Bob's going to walk through the plan itself, especially knowing the deck sits back far from the property line, it's cut in as you want it with the pent roof, which is important, it's another area for ingress and egress out of the house, and instead of having it on the front on the Brunswick, they just have it off of the back. So having said that, Leo, I'm going to ask, you just wear Mr. Lolio in, he'll describe the project, and ask the board if they have any questions here.
Okay, Mr. Lolio, just give us your name and business address, please.
Robert Lolio, 219 Bellevue Avenue, Hamilton, New Jersey.
Okay, and please raise your right hand, you swear in front of the testimony you'll give this evening will be the truth?
I do.
Okay, and Mr. Richmond, we accept this request.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Leo, thank you, Mr. Richmond. So just before Bob gets started, I'm sure all of you have reviewed Roger's report with regard to the fact that the house itself conforms in all aspects. It's not maxed out, most importantly, of course, building coverage at 35 or 40 is allowed, it's not at the very limit of all of the setbacks, it's a little bit more on each one, but the only change that we're proposing here is to move the deck that would have been off the front, off of the back, and Bob, why don't you describe the deck and how we got it?
The, the deck in the rear, it's, the outside dimensions are 13'4" by 6' foot, inside, because it has the low wall, would be 12'4" by 5 1/2 feet, so it's not a very large deck, it's, it's, it's only 80 square feet, and the, the deck is also, if, if you take the front deck, the rear deck's 43% of the front deck, so it's less than half.
So if this were in the front, it would have to be less than 50% of the deck below it, this is in the back, but it's still less than 50% below the deck on the second floor facing the front.
Correct, it meets all the front yard deck requirement, it has no roof, it's 43% of the area below, and it's hidden from the view by the pent roof, it's a well deck, which is contained.
Let's just show the picture.
Has a well, well structure in the roof line.
I'm sorry, Bob, you want to take that?
So the rear deck is a well deck, it's tucked within the pent roof of the roof structure in the rear, so you're really, only for that little bit of one-third wall space, you wouldn't even know the deck was there, it's not a large deck, it's not, it's only going to house one or two people, and we're here for the variance because it's in the rear and not in the front. We're only allowed one deck per unit.
Why did you change from the front to the back? View?
Well, at the time, the rules were changing, I believe, and we didn't, I don't, we, we never had one proposed in the front, they always want it in the rear because of the views and the sunset.
Sunsets.
So that's why the, it's required, we wanted it in the deck rather than the front.
Hey, Michael, come on up, because maybe, Leo, to Dorfman.
Sure.
Probably sworn in, answer some questions as well.
Okay, Mr. Dorfman, you're obviously the property owner.
Yes.
Please raise your right hand, you swear in front of the testimony you'll give will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Just aesthetically, the windows up top in the front, we thought looked nicer, and we did want to have the rear, small rear deck in the back for the sunset.
So when this case first came up, for the, you know, the width of the lot, was that third-floor deck in the rear part of that?
It was part of it, but then we took it off.
Right.
Right.
And why'd you take it off?
Just wanted to get started with the construction, we had to be here because that, if you remember, the lot itself is three inches short.
Right.
Of being 40.
Right.
We thought that was a pretty de minimis.
Yeah.
Change, so we wanted to get in, get the approval, and then come back as the house is being built, when the homeowner decide, decided or decides how to configure it best once it was already underway.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Michael, of, of the most importance, of course, when you were here the first time, you'll remember, hopefully, the board members that were here, you had several of your neighbors who came out, and they were very supportive, and they wanted you to have the house built, notwithstanding the fact that your lot was this short of being compliant with 40 feet. You are friendly, of course, with your rear yard neighbor, and your rear yard neighbor had prepared a letter to the board, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay, and that was something he did voluntarily, you didn't force him to do that?
No, he, no, he was all for it.
Okay, so they've never voiced any objection to what you're doing, and in fact, have been supportive of what you're doing, they just couldn't be here tonight.
Correct.
Has everybody on the board seen a copy of that letter?
Well, no, look, I don't have a problem if you make the representations and neighbors don't object, but it's obviously hearsay, I can't.
I understand, but the board can give it whatever weight it decides, it's the only neighbor that's affected by this, and that neighbor is very supportive.
The, 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 the board can draw inference, the neighbors aren't here, and, you know, they obviously did send a, a letter saying that they have no issue with it, but, well,
somebody might be here. The neighbor at 206 North, or the, the, the neighbor on Clarendon Avenue, the, the Broad's, Jack and Irene Broad.
And they're directly behind you, right?
Directly behind us.
Okay.
We have to share a gate in the back.
Okay.
Did you own the, the property when the previous house was on, on there?
Yes.
Okay, so you've been.
Yeah, we.
You've been a long time owner of this property.
Yes, yes, since.
Since when?
2012, I believe.
So you do know your neighbors?
Yeah, yeah, we know, very friendly.
Bob, you've given testimony, you've heard what Mr. Dorfman had to say about the rear yard deck, in your professional opinion, as a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey, do you see any negative that could possibly be associated with this application based upon the location of the deck, the fact that it is substantially smaller than 50% of the front deck, and the way it's designed is the pent roof that's tucked in? Any negatives that could be associated with that?
I don't see any negatives, it doesn't affect the light air and open space of the rear yard, it would just be a roof structure, it just happens that we tucked in a small deck in the roof line, so I don't see any negatives.
To the extent there could be any negatives associated with the application, would the positives of your design and the impact on the rear yard neighbor greatly outweigh any such negatives so that the municipal land use law of the state of New Jersey and City of Margate zoning code would be satisfied?
Yes.
Okay. So Mr. Chairman, I would rest, I think we've established the positive and negative regarding the neighbor, but we would just reserve the right to have Mr. Lolio and Mr. Dorfman testify if the board has any further questions, or if there's any members of the public that want to discuss.
Does anyone, anybody else on the board have anything to say, questions? Okay, anyone from the public likes to speak? Come on up.
Just give us your name and address, please.
Joe Sandoli, I'm at 211 North Clarendon.
211.
I'm not directly behind the property, I'm one over.
Okay, Mr. Sandoli, please raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth tonight?
I do.
Thank you.
My wife and I have been permanent residents of Margate since 2016, so almost 10 years, so this is our home, our full-time home. The house that's being built at 206 is one of the newer designs where the garage is on the first floor, so from what I understand, you're allowed to go up higher than that. So the rest of our houses that surround that house are all older construction, so this house already towers over every house around it. I wholeheartedly disagree that he says it doesn't affect anybody. Whoever's going to be out on that deck has a view right down into my backyard, and I think that's an infringement on my privacy, not to mention the back bedrooms I have, I don't know if they're going to be any, any tanning out there, or just the two people, or have friends over, whatever, but the house already has two decks in the front, I don't see the purpose of having two nice-sized decks in the front, and I don't see the purpose of having another one in the back, which, as I said, I think is just an infringement on my property, my privacy, and I don't want to be looking up at people, and I don't want them to be looking down at me if I'm in the backyard. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Can I just respond to that?
Sure.
Yeah, now, yeah.
So the, the main building is in the back, it steps back seven foot two from the building setback line, if we brought our building all the way to the building line and put big windows, it's, you're still going to have view of the neighbor's backyard, it's not, that's why I said it doesn't really affect the neighbors, because by the way, I have a big window overlooking their backyard that opens, or a bay window, a small deck serves the same purpose.
Well, the thing is that, you know, unless you open the window, nobody's, you have people, people will be on the deck.
But respectfully.
So I understand what he's saying, the neighbor.
Of course.
That if somebody's on the deck, maybe they're there at eight at night, maybe they're at 10 o'clock at night, maybe they're there at 2:00 in the morning, but you are, I, I, I understand what Bob's saying, but at the same time, that's a deck, it's not a window.
We're also allowed to do a second-floor rear deck.
Right.
So.
But that's a second-floor deck, and you're allowed to do that?
Yeah.
You're not allowed to do a third-floor rear deck.
Correct, but just, if the house were built all the way out, which it could be, the window.
Yeah, but should've, could've, would've.
As I said in the last testimony.
That seemed to work the last time, though.
Finish your, finish what you're going to say, go ahead.
If, if the deck were built out to the edge where it could be on the, not the deck, the, the window, it's more of an obstruction than how far back as it is, because the pent roof is still further back from the edge of the roof below.
Right, I understand that, I understand.
So this design is less obstructive on the neighbor than if they put a window all the way out to the edge of the property line, or did a second-floor deck.
Right.
Both of which could still be built because the house is being framed. We thought this was less of a problem.
Okay.
I, I have a, I have a one-and-a-half-story home, they've built some new homes behind me, and the. They've built some new homes behind me and the people could see in my bedroom from their, from their kitchen and dining room. The higher up you go, the less, the less view of an angle you have into somebody's house, the higher up you go. Geometry. The, uh, and any, any, um, any deck on any side of the house, to me, is an asset for fire hazard and somebody to get out of a building. It's a safe haven. That's, that's my feeling. Front, back side of the house, a deck is a safe haven for anybody that's up there. And like I said, they, they could see from, in my bedroom, there's a house, there's a house going up from me, two houses away. It's four stories and mine's one and a half. When they go up their steps, they see in my bedroom. Of course, I have blinds. I mean, who doesn't have blinds in their bedroom? That's all I have.
And I appreciate that, Mr. Palmisano. Getting back to what Mr. Tolson said, you know, the could've, would've, should've argument. But it does make sense here that this design was purposely, from Bob, put in place to make it less of an annoyance to the neighbors. And we live in town where all of our setbacks are pretty close together. At some point, everyone will be out either in their front yard on a porch or looking in. We're, we're tight. All of the homes are very tight here. But we think this design is better being less tight than if it were, as we say, maxed out. And then the property line, I'm sorry, the, uh, third floor window was further out and the second floor deck could be further out. This is by its very nature almost impossible to look over. It is impossible to look over because Mr. Dorfman and his wife will be looking over at a roof, not into the neighbor's yard. So we certainly get it that it's unfortunate that we're as tight as we are, but, um. Sure, come on up.
All right, all right, hold on. You got to get sworn in.
Just give us your name and address. Come on up.
I'm Linda Sandoli. I'm at two eleven North Clarendon Avenue.
Okay, Ms. Sandoli, please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give of the truth?
I do.
Okay.
Okay. And the concern that I have is looking into my yard. Right now, as I see the house being built and I go in my yard, I see the, where the deck will go. And that will look directly into my yard. And so if I'm entertaining or out there, I feel my privacy will be violated. Thank you.
It's not about looking into our bedroom. It's the view that goes straight down. We've been watching this house be built. We're full-time residents. We've been watching this house be built since it was demolished.
Don't they have the same view from the second floor and first floor into your yard?
Well, with a third floor deck, they got a real good view.
Well, they got a view from all these four or five windows in the back directly into your yard.
Yeah, but that's inside.
I think that's what Mr. Palmisano was.
That's inside. This is going to be outside.
Respectfully, again, what if they did a second floor deck off the back and then they'd have the same view? There's going to be a deck off the back. Wouldn't you want it to be higher up?
Well, the deck on the second floor is allowed. So there's nothing I can say about that. But a deck on the third floor, that's why you need a variance. Where they would have put it in there and allowed it to begin with. We wouldn't be going through this. So that's my opinion.
I just want to mention that there, when they're sitting on the deck, they're sitting in this chair. There's going to be a low wall about this high. So when you're, they're going to be mostly sitting, they're not hanging out. It's not a party deck. So when they're sitting here, they're not going to be able to look over the wall down into your backyard space. It'd be easier to look out a window standing up into your backyard space.
Okay. Anyone else from the public? Okay. Anybody else on the board? Okay. Public portion is closed. And Leo?
Yeah, if there's nothing further, then it's just a, it's a C variance application for the one, it's one variance to allow the third floor rear deck where they're not permitted. Terms of conditions, just the standard ones. Anything, any, any other approvals you may need. Subject any representations made by the applicant during the course of the hearing and any other conditions in Mr. McLaren's report unless otherwise addressed. So we'll just need a motion, a second, and a roll call vote.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Michael Richmond?
Uh, so I kind of think that it would have been good to address this when you came originally, but that didn't happen. The only comments we got were from the neighbors in the rear that have an issue with it. And I, I do agree with Craig that I do like, you know, third floor decks for safety. But in this, that didn't even come up when we were talking. It was more like the, the, the front elevation and the sunsets. So to me, that's not a compelling argument to approve the variance, so I'm going to deny it.
Richard Patterson?
When we were changing the rules, I was a, I was a big proponent of decks anywhere on the front or the back, especially the back for sunsets. And we have approved a few decks in the rear, but I think in, I, I think two of them. But in both of those cases, there was actually roofs on the side of the deck, too. They were really tucked into the house and hidden. I was outvoted. I mean, this is just a plain rear deck that we specifically voted not to have. And, and regretfully, I have to vote no. I mean, I would love to see it be approved, but I was outvoted and I, I have to uphold that.
Dan Adams?
Okay. Well, I, I have to echo Mr. Palmisano's comments. I understand what Mr. Richmond and Mr. Patterson both said. But when I look at it from a safety aspect, I always have the arrow on the side, you know, from a fire perspective of safety of the residence. And it's just another place for them to go in the event of a fire and for us to gain access to them. I understand what the neighbors are saying, but based on the safety aspect, I'm going to vote for this and approve it.
Excuse me, can I say one thing?
Craig Palmisano?
Yes, um, I was a fireman for twenty-eight years. In a lot of, in a lot of buildings where the heat and smoke is so hot on the top floors, that's where, that's where the heat and smoke goes. I know you're not here for that. You don't even think about that. You don't think of fire, but I do. You think of the sunsets and the beauty. I've been up on the third floors and fourth floors on some of these buildings. And I think everybody in this planning board should be on some of these buildings and see what the views are and see what the drop is when you have to hang from a window and drop forty feet, thirty-five to forty feet out of a window. There is no duct for a safe haven. But you're here for, not that, you're here for the sunset views and, um, and I'm with you on that. I've been there, I've seen them, they're beautiful and it's wonderful. And it's, it's a great place to get a breath of fresh air. And, um, I'm going to say yes to this.
Stephen Giasecki?
Well, I'm not a big proponent of the, of the decks outside in the back. And I would prefer to see the deck in the front where it would be easier for the fire department to do a rescue. I was here for the original plan on this and I approved it then, but I'm going to deny it on this one.
Drew Campbell?
I'm not in favor.
Rich Tolson?
I agree with Mr. Richmond's comments that, um, it should have been in the original application. The deck could go on the front. They are specifically not allowed in the back. And every time we say yes, makes it that much harder to say no. So I, although I appreciate Counselor's comments, but how it may have worked, the previous application, it's not going to work on this.
John Pitts? Uh, yeah, I was here for the original request and we were complaining about the rear deck. My recollection is you pulled the rear deck to get it approved the first time. I really don't understand why I went back here today. Were your third floor decks are not allowed? I vote no.
Application is denied with two in favor and seven opposed.
Okay. Our next case is Sonya Vextine, nine six zero six Venter Avenue, block one thirty, lot thirty-seven, located in the C-two zoning district, seeking D variance relief for residential use in a commercial zone, together with C variance relief for the lot width, side yard setbacks of the house, and potentially others for the construction of a new single-family home. Current on taxes, water, and sewer payments, proof of advertising, and notifications provided represented by Eric Goldstein.
Mr. Chairman, I'll start on this. Thank you, Board Chair, uh, Chairman and Board Members. The application is Sonya Vextine, nine six zero six Venter Avenue, block one thirty, uh, block one thirty, lot thirty-seven, located in a C-two zone. It's a currently a single-family non-conforming structure. And we're seeking a D variance to continue that use at a higher, with an expansion of the house. So it's a hardship variance based on the undersized lot. Unique, it's only twenty-five feet wide. It's a substantial benefit variance and it's also a use variance. Just indicated the background. Their zoning chart, there's two zoning charts. One is Schedule C-two, which is the location of this structure. And they need a use variance because commercial on the ground floor or for mixed use, residential is only allowed above. Existing structure is single-family residential and the proposal is single-family residential. So it's a D variance to continue that non-conforming use. Lot area required in the C-two is four thousand square feet. Existing area is three thousand one hundred twenty-five square feet. And proposed lot width minimum required in the C-two is fifty feet. They have twenty-five feet. So that's, in the ordinance, it says, single-family residential construction in the C-one, C-two, CBD, WSD, shall comply with the single-family requirements in Schedule B-two, or B-one, I'm sorry. So the second schedule is S-twenty-five. And I mimicked the S-twenty-five zoning standards, which closely resemble what this is going to be or asking for. Minimum lot area of twenty-five hundred square feet. They have thirty-one twenty-five, which is would be conforming. Minimum lot width of forty feet. Minimum, they provide twenty-five feet, which is existing non-conforming. Lot depth, there is no requirement for that, but they do have a hundred twenty-five feet. And typical of this zone, this area, twenty-five foot wide lots, a hundred twenty-five feet deep is not unusual. Front yard setback, they need a variance to the portrait of deck where nineteen point two feet is, is prevailing. Six point two feet exists and fifteen point six seven feet is proposed requiring a variance. Side yard setbacks for both the left and the right, five feet is required in the S-twenty-five. Three feet and six point eight feet exist and three point five feet for both sides is proposed. We both require a variance. Combined side yard setback, and the minimum required is thirty-seven percent of the lot width, which equates to nine point two five feet. And nine point eight feet exist and seven, seven feet is proposed. That requires a variance. Rear yard setbacks, if they applied as S-twenty-five zoning standards, they comply. The only remaining variance that they would be seeking tonight is the building coverage where thirty-nine point three seven percent is the maximum permitted. And forty-three point two percent is proposed, therefore requiring a variance. Again, they have to get the use variance to be able to use the S-twenty-five zoning district requirements. So I turn it over to Mr. Goldstein.
Thank you, Mr. McLaren. Mr. Chairman, and I do agree with Roger with regard to the use variance and then the bulk requirements. What I'd like to do, if it's okay, Leo, is to get the use variance on the record first. But before doing so, I think it's important to realize, I'm sure all of you went out to the property. This is a single-family house that exists, the lot clearly is not in existence just yet. There's a house there now that's flood damaged. On one side is the Verizon hub. It's actually owned by Verizon. On the other side is a building which is not in the greatest of shape. Prob, the subject property, um, does not meet flood code requirements, but it's also a single in what is now a commercial zone. Okay? So here are the choices the board has with regard to the use variance. Commercial would have to be a twenty-five foot wide commercial structure built there. Clearly, over the course of however many years, nothing has occurred on this specific piece of property nor in the surrounding area. I would submit that on the D alone, the board must grant variance where it constitutes a taking. And I do want to go through some of the cases, Leo, because it's important before we get to the C variance relief. Okay? I'm sure you're aware, it's Pappas versus Board of Adjustment, which is two fifty-four NJ Super fifty-two. It's DeSai versus Phillipsburg, which is three sixty NJ Super five eighty-six, both of which are appellate division cases, which says, in a situation where the property is presently zoned with a non-conforming use or a structure, as this is, the denial of the ability to use that project, meaning the way it's set up now as a single family, constitutes inverse condemnation. So I'd like at least to discuss that issue now. We'll have Mr. Barnhart discuss, um, the planning aspect to establish the D. But I want to make sure all the board members realize that you have a single in a commercial zone already. The failure to let the property owner use it as a single going forward constitutes, in my opinion, a taking. And Leo, I just want your opinion on that so we can use that as the basis to go for the D before we start talking about the C variance relief. And I, you don't have to make, you can take a look at the cases. I've got Cox here, it's on page five thirty-four, section thirty-six, point two, point one zero. Yes.
Thanks.
It's a complex case, because first you have to decide if the property owner can use the property as a single-family home, residential use. And then we can get into Bob's, um, work on the plan itself and the setbacks. But before we get there, the board first has to make a decision on a D variance, which is a requirement that five of the seven of you have to vote in the affirmative. I would submit that all seven of you have to vote in the affirmative, but I'll let Leo give you the advice on that.
So it's your, it's your position that you don't have to put on any proofs for a use variance?
No, we're going to put them on.
If we say no, it's.
No, no. We're going to put the proofs on. But obviously, we have to establish the positive and negative criteria. But right now, you've got a single flood damaged house.
Can you raise it as it, can you raise it as it is right now?
You could raise it in its current condition.
So how's that a taking?
Well, you'd have to agree to the variances for the raise and that would be the same thing.
You could raise it by right, can't you?
Well, no, if we wanted to raise it up, we'd still be raising it. We'd expand a existing non-conformity.
Is there a state law that lets you raise it?
It does.
I'm not saying you don't have a good project, but to take a, a taking analysis and, and for me to instruct the board that if you say no, this is a one hundred percent taking of the property, I, I'm not in a position on the spot to do that.
Mr. Barnhart puts on testimony.
Without reading eighty-seven briefs.
Correct. Mr. Barnhart puts on testimony that establishes the positive and negative at that, and the board is satisfied with the positive and negative.
Sure. I, look, I think your argument as to a taking holds some weight and I think the board needs to think about that, that there's very little utility to a twenty-five foot lot in a commercial zone, uh, as, as one of the arguments you advance. Whether, if the board says no, it opens the city to a lawsuit that they have to now compensate the owner. Yeah, that's why you have.
Sure.
Three-year litigations with judges and everything like that. Is that?
And that's fine. But I just wanted to be clear that the house has existed for quite some time.
Right. And it's damaged.
Yeah. So we've got, this is the classic D variance hardship case. And then, of course, the C variance hardship case will flow from, from, from that with the size of the lot and everything else based on what's on the property now. But yeah, the house could be raised, but you'd be raising a flood damaged house in a commercial zone. So you'd still need some variance relief if we went over what is otherwise allowable by way of the, um, automatic, the automatic flood variance.
Well, you wouldn't need a variance if it was raised to a certain height.
Correct.
So.
So that's why John's going to put some testimony on it.
Yeah. And, and the other thing, the other question I have is, from what I understand, if there is an existing house on the property.
Yeah.
Then you could build another house. Like, let's say this was just an empty lot that was never built on, that it might be more of an issue. Am I correct with that?
Except, Mr. Richmond, respectfully, the house that's there now is so badly damaged that it may not be raised.
No, I listen, I, I, as a builder, my times out of ten, it does not make sense to raise a house, especially if something has been damaged like that. Yeah, and we saw that in a couple. Yeah, and we saw that in a couple cases where...
Yeah.
...proved the raise, and then they went to do it, and the house fell apart.
Right.
Then they had to come back. So I'm not, I'm just saying for a fact that, go ahead.
You are allowed to replicate what is there at the higher elevation, same as the Beach Drive.
I don't understand.
If you couldn't raise this house, the existing house, you can rebuild that in kind at the higher elevation, at the same exact dimensions.
Okay, well, this isn't that difficult.
Right, and, you know, part of the argument, if you could do that, maybe what you're proposing's better.
John, would you like to come up and get sworn in, please?
Okay.
So, John's been sworn in already once, but I just want to...
Yeah.
...have him sworn in on this.
Mr. Barnhart, just raise your right hand, you swear affirm the testimony you'll give this evening, it'll be the truth. And you're already qualified and already sworn tonight as an engineer and a planner, so you're fine to proceed.
I want to just stand here. All right. John, you've been involved in the project, you're a licensed professional planner and professional engineer in the state of New Jersey.
Yes.
Just with regard to the project itself, of course, Bob's gonna talk about the dimensions, but talk about the property, where it sits in town, the fact that the Verizon hub next to it has a structure that's very far off of Venter Avenue, which obviously skews the front setback, and what the surrounding properties look like, and the fact that this is a single in a commercial zone, and somehow got built this way years ago, and was damaged by the flood.
So it is a unique property. There are a handful of them, a handful of twenty-five-foot-wide lots in your commercial zone. We have been in front of this Board on a number of occasions for just exactly what we're here for this evening, existing single-family houses on these narrow lots that happen to fall in a commercial zone. When you look at this application from a use variance perspective, you kind of have to look at the specifics of it in that this property is sitting on Venter Avenue, immediately to his right is a utility that's gonna be there, you know, forever. You've got residential to the left of us. If you look at this block while you're in a commercial zone, once you get past kind of the heart of commercial, the line share's block is residential. And so even across the street, you've got some multifamily residential, but the line share of this block is residential in character. So in order to justify the de-variants, we think that there's two purposes of zoning that really apply to this application. The first is that the application promotes the general welfare. The reason that it promotes the general welfare in this case is because the site is particularly well-suited for the use. Why do I say that? Well, based on how I just started. We have a single-family house on the lot. This neighborhood is accustomed to having a single-family house on the lot for many, many years. We're proposing a single-family house, so we are matching the use that's been on this property for many, many years. We have a lot that is so narrow that the permitted uses in the zone really don't work. To create a commercial space on the ground floor, to have any level of circulation on that property, or parking for that property, is very, very difficult. There is no ability to purchase adjacent land on either side, both of those parcels are developed. So because of the particular suitability of this site to remain as a single-family home, we believe that the general welfare is promoted by allowing this house to be demolished and to build a fully compliant with regard to flood and all current building codes, it does certainly advance the general welfare. And I think the second purpose of zoning that's advanced with this application is establishment of appropriate population densities. Again, it's an narrow lot. If you were to try to develop it commercially, look at the commercial zoning require or allowances, this lot could be sixty percent covered. It could be more intensely constructed or built than what is being proposed. We are not proposing a multifamily structure, it is just one unit, one decast, single-family home. So for those reasons, we believe that this is a very appropriate population density for this specific piece of property. With regard to negative criteria, is there a substantial detriment to the Zone Planner's zoning ordinance? While this is a departure from the Zone Plan, because this is a commercial zone, its compatibility with the neighborhood kind of, we believe, counteracts that because there is so much residential around it, and inability to acquire other parcels. When you have small parcels in a commercial zone that are undeveloped or underdeveloped, and there's the ability to maybe potentially buy other parcels and accumulate a number of vacant parcels to then develop a commercial property, then maybe it doesn't make the best sense to develop or to redevelop a small parcel, but you don't have that here. You have a fully developed block. So we believe that there is no substantial detriment to the Zone Plan or zoning ordinance. The second prong of the negative criteria is whether there is a substantial detriment to the public good. My opinion is this is only a benefit to the public. While there are some C-variances that we're requesting because of the unique narrowness of the lot, by constructing a new home here and eliminating the damaged blighted home that sits there now, we believe that's just a benefit to the neighborhood. So from a D-variants perspective, we believe that the positive and the negative criteria are clearly established.
Thank you, John. Mr. Manus, what I'd like to do, if it's okay with you and Mr. Chairman and Mr. McLaren, is have the Board vote on the D, and then Bob can get started on the design of the house, if that's okay. I think that's probably the better way to go.
Yeah, I'm fine with by receding the vote, just so the Board understands. And I forgot to just note for the record, Mr. Pitts and Danny Adams recused themselves as, because it's a D-variants. Does the Board understand that? So essentially, what, they put on testimony that since they're in the commercial zone, technically, they need a use variance to demolish and rebuild a single-family in the commercial zone. And it's not uncommon to first vote on that, because they need five votes to get that. And the Board would be voting on, yes, we think this is appropriate for a single-family on this property. Then they would get into Mr. Lolio's design, and that would establish that they can build a single-family. Then we would get into the setback variances and other variances requesting. Does that make sense?
Yep.
So we're gonna take a motion and a second to grant the use variance, only when he's five out of seven.
Would the next vote be...
The next vote, we could prob, would probably be four out of seven on the Cs. It would be. Okay, so we'll need that motion in a second.
I think, Leo, just to protect, I don't want to hurt my own case, but I think you have to open to the public on this as well.
Ah, no, it's a good point. That's a good point. Yep.
Good, yeah.
On the use variance aspect of the case, does anyone from the public want to speak to this?
Yes, I do.
Come on up, please, and give us your name and address.
Sal Chillemi, two A Madison Avenue.
Sal Chillemi, can you spell that for us?
C-H-I-L-L-E-M-I.
Okay, Mr. Chillemi, please raise your right hand, do you swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
Gentlemen, ladies, this is the property he's talking about. That's the house that this gentleman wants to tear down and build another house, a single-family house. This is my house here, okay? And that's the end of my party line. They want to get a variance, I believe it's five feet from another property, I believe, am I right? Okay. He wants to get three and a half more feet, and he wants to be right there. Three and a half more feet. Now, you talk about Peep and Toms, that other guy looking in the windows.
That's not what he's asking for.
No, no. Oh, he's not asking to build a house about a foot and a half from there?
No.
No? Okay. That's good, so he'll stay five feet from the house?
Well, here's the deal.
He's at three feet.
Go ahead, you go ahead.
They're here for the use variance in order to reconstruct that. You're discussing the C-variants, which is if they're successful with this vote, that'll be next.
Oh, so I have to, I could just come back?
Yeah, it'd be better to wait until, well, let us get the use...
Tonight, though. Tonight, though, not like...
All right, I'm already sworn in.
Yeah, you're sworn in.
I swear.
Anyone else as to the use itself? Okay.
Okay. Close the public on that, and then take the...
Oh, yeah, okay, so we're gonna close the public portion. Same one, from the Board have anything? Before we get on this. Okay. Can I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Michael Richmond.
Like, if you go to the property and look around, the majority of the neighborhood is residential, so I'm not really concerned about losing commercial space on this one. I think it would definitely, in my opinion, well, it doesn't matter at this point, but anyway, I'm gonna vote yes for the use variance.
Richard Patterson.
I also vote yes for the same reason.
Craig Palmisano.
Yes.
Stephen Giasecki.
Yes.
Drew Campbell.
Yes.
Rich Tolson.
Yes.
Patty Rosenberg.
Yes.
Motion carries, seven in favor and zero opposed for the D.
Okay, thank you all. Having gotten that out of the way, there will be a new house built there. I guess the question now is, is Bob's design okay with the Board? And we can kind of walk through that now, and get his architectural testimony about the actual dimensions of the house. John's also gonna discuss the planning aspect of this, and then I'm sure the gentleman will also have some input, of course. But Bob, you've designed a house here, you know this lot, of course, it's less than forty feet wide, so you've designed a house to be built, which is two stories over parking, not two and a half. So we're limited a little bit, based on the city's change to their code a few years ago. Walk us through what you propose to be built.
So I propose a two-story dwelling over a parking and entry level. The side yard setbacks are proposed to be three and a half, five feet required. So we have a total of seven feet, actually a side yard.
Can I make a recommendation? Stop you right there. So three and a half feet on each side. One side is a bell telephone property that doesn't affect anyone. Why can't we go four feet on one side and three feet on the other for the seven feet? Four feet on the property that's next to a neighbor, and three feet that's nothing but a city property.
Great idea. Absolutely.
Give them another six inches, four feet, to that gentleman over there instead of the five feet, to your shy foot.
Like it. There's a three and...
Three and four.
From the left side, four feet.
Yeah.
Instead of three and a half, three and a half.
And the right side, eight feet.
Any shift to satisfy, maybe...
Just moving the house.
Of course, we want to be good neighbors, of course, Mrs. Vexstein wants to build something that's gonna be good for the neighbors and good for herself, so that's a good idea. So that'll be shifted over six inches towards the bell telephone, I mean, the Verizon hub.
What is it, right?
Yeah.
With the side yard, the other variances we're asking for is the front yard setback with the porch. The porch currently sits at fifteen point six seven feet, and nineteen point two feet is the prevailing average.
Now, Bob, before you get any further, that prevailing average is based on what?
That prevailing average, there's only one house, when you take the high and the low, there's only one other property to compare it to, and that house is at nineteen point two feet. If I counted the subject property, which according to the six point two feet, and I used the other property at nineteen point two feet, the average would have been twelve point seven. I'm at fifteen point six seven.
Is that a normal front setback for a porch in town? It's a little excessive, don't you think?
It's clearly larger than most houses.
But it's skewed, because the only other one we had to derive it from is set so far back.
Correct. The other properties are commercial properties that have, there was three other properties that are commercial property that didn't have porch, it's obviously their commercial property.
And you had to count the Verizon hub building, which is fifty-one point six feet back.
Correct, but that gets omitted because of the highest...
Right, but it was still, if that one didn't exist, we'd have a different high or low to go.
Correct. So it's always been a question whether or not that subject property is included in the average. I have not been including it, but if you do include it, we will admit front yard porch. The building setbacks, is that twenty-five feet, that meets the ordinance? So we're just really, it's not affecting the open feel of the front yard setback, it's just an open porch, open on three sides. The other variance is building coverage, the lot, the twenty-five, the narrowness of the lot, we felt that getting the parking underneath was important, so that's why the house is only two stories. If we lowered the house, we could have went to two and a half stories, and the square footage, I could have, the max square footage on this property could have been three thousand seventy-six square feet, and that would have been a two and a half story dwelling. The proposed two-story dwelling is only twenty-seven hundred square feet. So my footprint, my building coverage is larger because the footprint's larger, but the overall area is less than what would have been permitted. If that makes sense to you.
Is the twenty-five foot, is that, can you go back any further than that, or is that, that's what it is?
The rear yard setbacks at the...
Twenty-five foot, that's where you gotta be?
Yes.
Okay.
Really the building coverage and the front porch, and the side yard, that's why we're here.
Bob, as a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey, you designed this house, obviously taking great consideration with the City of Margate zoning code and the State of New Jersey municipal land use law. Does any of the design and any of the testimony you gave us previously, in your opinion, as a licensed professional, strike this project as anything to be considered a negative? Are there any negatives associated with this plan?
No, I've done a similar project, multiple times, the same five lot, it's just that well...
And to the extent someone could consider a negative, does the overall design, which will ultimately be constructed hopefully by Mrs. Vexstein, create a positive, in your opinion, that this project will have more positives and the positives will outweigh the negatives?
Yes.
Bob's here to answer any questions, of course. I'm gonna ask John to give us some planning testimony. That's really it for the house. This is a political, unfortunately, Margate has a lot of these twenty-foot wide lots, and we've developed them fairly well, but there's gonna be, it's gonna be tight, but we want to give the gentleman a little bit more room on his side. We'll shift it over a bit, and it's about all we can do with a lot, as far as width goes.
So the actual width of the house is, what?
Eighteen.
Hmm? Eighteen feet?
Yes. Pretty narrow. Not much we can do.
Well, we could have done a commercial like bowling alley or something like that, right?
The neighbors would complain, there'd be boys, there'd be people smoking, something would happen, you're never gonna get... Mr. Chairman, Mr. Barnhart's already been sworn in on this application, so I'm just gonna ask him to continue as far as the C goes. He's already been sworn in on the D. So John, from a planning perspective, knowing this property, knowing the lot, knowing that the area's tight, just walk us through what you see as the benefits of this plan that Bob put together.
Sure. I think that this case from a planning perspective is the definition of a C-one, or hardship type of variance because of the exceptional variance of the lot. If you apply the strict definition and the ordinance to each of the setbacks, for the side yard as an example, at five and five, I'd leave you fifteen feet, which in order to develop a single-family house fifteen feet wide would be unreasonable. It would be too hard to get a garage space in, together with an appropriate access point that would be aesthetically pleasing from the street. So we believe that the side yard setbacks, both the individual side and the aggregate side, are justified under the C-one criteria. With regard to the front yard setback, as Mr. Lolio described, because of the number of homes on this block, because of when you throw out the high and the low, it pushes this property to a point of requiring fifteen point six seven feet, which... Which, while it does, our proposal does deviate, I'm sorry, not, I said that wrong. The requirement, or the proposal is fifteen six point six seven. It does deviate from the average, but nearly sixteen feet is a very large front yard setback for many of residential properties in the community. So we believe that it's an appropriate setback for this block, and it is a minor deviation. And then the last...
And that's for the porch, that's just the porch.
That's correct. The house, the house wall does comply, that is correct. With regard to the last variances with regard to building coverage, it is a very modestly-sized house, so Mr. Lolio developed a ground floor that provides two garage spaces, and then also has a reasonably-sized storage area, because the living quarters above is just not that big. It is, we believe, a de minimis request, we're allowed to be thirty-nine point three seven five. Mr. Lolio's design is at forty-three point two. And although we are, the thirty-nine point three seven five is based on the S-twenty-five criteria or the residential criteria, if this were actually being developed as a commercial property, the building coverage could actually be as high as sixty percent. So it's a variance because we're going under the S-twenty-five standards, but your commercial zone, so this area does actually permit coverages, building coverage is up to sixty. So we believe that is an appropriate request. But this is, it's a, it's a... But this is, it's a, it's, it's a classic, unique condition with the narrowness, narrowness of the lot. The requests that have been made by the design of Mr. Lolio, we think are, make sense. We think that they are not overburdening the property. And one of the big mitigating factors, if you look at the landscape coverage that's been calculated, it is, it is almost fifty percent. I think it's forty-eight point, forty-eight point nine percent, which we don't see very often on properties, especially undersized or, or narrow properties. And Mr. Lolio was also still able to, even though the lot's only twenty-five feet wide, was still able to meet the front yard landscaping requirements. So that kind of goes to mitigate the, the minor deviation and the increased building coverage. So in total, we believe that there is no substantial detriment to the zone plan. I think that, that, that Mr. Lolio has done the best that he could, given the lot size and the variances are justified. And we believe there is no substantial detriment to the public good. Based on my use variance testimony that I already gave, we believe that this application really is a benefit to the public because we are eliminating what I would consider to be a blighted property at this point.
Thank you, John. Just with the board's information as well, and Roger did send this copy over to the county. Because this is on Venter Avenue, which is a county road, it also is subject to another set of eyes. Count, Atlanta County Development Review Committee has to look at this and approve it. So once we're done, whatever the outcome is, it still has to go to the Atlanta County Planners for review. There is a curb cut that exists on Venter Avenue, one curb cut only. We're replacing it with one other curb cut, so we're not changing the traffic pattern, we're not changing any of the circulation and that's pretty much it.
So the, the house is there now, the existing house, that setback to the, let's say, the Atlantic City side, the property's only three feet.
Yeah.
Right.
Correct.
And we're, so we're going to add another foot to that.
That's right.
Got it.
Well, six inches to that, a total of a foot, of seven. Yeah.
So the city has passed a new ordinance, or revising ordinance for water and sewer utilities where the developer has to install the water and sewer services to the main now. And none of the valves, meters can be in the apron, sidewalk, or driveway. So I just wanted to make you aware of that.
Good to know. I know she hasn't builder picked out yet, but that's good to know.
Okay, anybody else from the board? Okay, anyone from the public? Yep.
Okay, Mr. Schlemmer, you're still sworn in, so I don't need to swear you in again.
All I'm asking for is the five-feet variance. I wanted to show you, it's not, that's his ground to there, but if he builds his house and he's any less than the five feet.
Could you use the microphone, sir?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's to be on the record. There's one that...
That's all right. Look, I'll, I'll get in there in a second. Yeah, yeah, that's fine, yeah. All I'm asking for is the five feet, because what I'm saying is, if you could see this, look how close, and my grill's there. If the smoke comes up, I'm going to, I'm going to black mark his house. I'm just saying, give me the five feet, instead of varying it where he'd take, he's only two and a half feet or three feet.
He's giving you four feet.
Well, what's it supposed to be, five?
If you want five, he's giving you four.
Can I have five?
He's a three now.
It's a...
I know.
It's a twenty-five foot lot. It's a, they can't build a house that's fifteen feet wide.
Go ahead.
The sheds, your shed is on the property line.
No, it's not, I'm on the deck, I'm on the deck. It's on the property line. That, his stones are on the, on his property line. The guy next door to me.
How close is your house to the property?
See his, I'm at, I'm at the property line. I think I got eight feet. That's all I got. Now, his stones, he could pick up a few inches there, but that's the house next that he don't have to use of the ground.
Robert, how far back is, is the new house coming?
Twenty-five feet from the back.
He's going to go to the end of my house.
Twenty-five feet of lawn in the back. Twenty-five feet of lawn from the back of the new home to the end of the property.
To the end of my property here.
To the end of their property. I don't know where, I don't know whether they meet up.
My, our building is starting twenty-five feet back from the property, so...
That shed's going to be in the...
That shed's on my property.
Yeah, but it's going to be, the building's twenty-five feet from the rear yard.
You're talking about twenty-five feet from the rear?
Show them where the rear yard is. Robert, can you show them where the end of the line is?
This is the street, over here. This is your rear yard?
Wait, where's the street?
This is the street? This is the rear property line? Okay, your building twenty-five feet back, so your shed's probably like right there.
So he's not quite going to be up to, he'll be up to here then, maybe, right about there.
Your, your building's probably close to twenty-five feet. I don't know what your rear yard is.
My, my building is, my house is eighteen or eight, nineteen feet.
So we'll be farther back than your, we'll be closer to the street than your house.
So you'll be like over here, you won't, won't be further than, than here.
That shed's over the lawn.
But I'd still rather have five feet, if it's a five-foot variance.
Right.
Look, I got a fifty-fifty chance. He's building a house and I'm in this house. Otherwise, I, I wouldn't have even come. I got the Dairy Queen, the Dairy Bar in the front, which is nice, you get a lot of traffic, a lot of noise. I never complained. So he's, you're saying he's going to come to about here?
Yes.
Let him take it from here, there's nobody ever going to go on here, on the Verizon side.
I would put it at two feet on the other side.
Is that a problem? It's Verizon, it's dead ground, they're never going to use it.
Is two feet abroad?
That was my question.
You can have fire code.
Yeah, yeah, you gotta be, you can't be more than, being a builder, if you get closer than three feet, that kicks in this whole fire code thing where you have to use special windows and you can't have hardly any windows and it, three feet is, is pretty much where you want to be. You don't want to be any closer than three feet, or else it kicks in a bunch of other, right?
I would like, if we could keep it at three foot one inches, then I, I'm allowed to have windows inside.
Right. Right, so, yeah. So you're going to have four foot now and we're tw, you're tw...
Three point nine.
Three point nine? And you're going to be like twenty, twenty-five feet, the building's going to be twenty-five feet forward from the backyard.
Okay.
Okay?
Like your four feet.
Yeah, four feet.
Five feet eleven.
That's good, that's good.
All right, it is what it is.
Thank you.
He was good, this guy was good. He's all money fat, guy who built the house.
Get out paid yourself.
Why, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Let's go back to three feet. Let's go back to three feet.
All right. Okay, so anyone from the public? Public portion's closed. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, do we need, just to specify?
Oh, I'm sorry.
The use was already granted, the front yard setback to the decks and the porch, they're at seventeen, fifteen point six seven feet, where nineteen point two is requirement, the requirement. Just so I have this right, on the right side, which is towards Verizon, you're going to have three feet one inch, and then on the other side, three feet eleven inches?
Yes.
Is that total seven? Okay. And that's on, okay. And then the combined side yard's still at seven, where nine point two five is the requirement. And then building coverage is forty-three point two percent, where the permitted maximum is thirty-nine point three seven five percent. And then the standard conditions, you noted that it's on a county road, so it's subject to county approval, subject to any other conditions in Mr. McLaren's report, subject to any representations made by the applicant during the course of the hearing. And we'll do another motion, another roll call vote, and we'll need a four out of seven.
Okay. Just out of curiosity, why is it four out of seven? Majority?
Because now, now it's essentially just C variances. So when they needed the use part, that was five out of seven.
Okay.
So they, they, they buy for...
Reckon as his only board now.
Yeah.
Can't, can't you vote on it, get to C variance?
Well, he already kind of technically recused himself when I put it on the record, so had I known they were going to buy for K, eh, probably still, still better off to keep it.
Okay.
But...
All righty.
Sure.
Yes.
Yeah.
On your, on the side elevations, where the air conditioning units are in the back. When you look at the rear elevation, it just looks like they're on top of the extended veranda, but then, yes, there. But then when you look at the side elevation on page two oh one?
Two oh one.
No, no, that one. Oh, my plan is different than your plan.
Okay, good. All right. We're ready to go?
Yeah, I don't know if we made a motion or a...
No, that's all right, we have to make a motion.
Yeah, it looked like there was like a, like another roof over the air conditioning units, but...
No, they, they just have a platform off the back.
Okay, okay.
All right, do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion, second.
Michael Richmond?
Yeah, I, I think this is a hardship variance. You really can't, I mean, an eighteen-foot wide house, there's a house already there that's existing. Most, majority of the neighborhood is residential. I think it's a vast improvement to what's there now, and I'm going to approve it.
Richard Patterson?
I think a commercial use is, is crazy there, it just doesn't make sense. I see no problem, I see it as a hardship with a twenty-five foot lot. I don't think a house is practical less than eighteen feet, so I approve.
Craig Palmisano?
Yeah, twenty-five foot lot again, and I don't know how you would put commercial and residential. You wouldn't have anywhere to put the cars if you had commercial there. All right, so I approve.
Steven Giasecki?
I agree with my fellow board members, I approve.
Andrew Campbell?
I see the hardship here, I mean, it's too small for commercial, too small for mixed use. Thank God there's not a pool. The only, the only negative I see is that we're losing some permeable space. But besides that, I approve.
Rich Tolson?
Yes, I don't know what type of commercial we could require there that would be successful. I believe Mr. Barnhart's testimony to be accurate and compelling, and for those reasons, I vote to approve.
Patty Rosenberg?
I agree with all the things about commercial property. Microphone on, sorry.
Motion carries seven in favor and zero opposed.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, we're going to take a five-minute break.
Yeah, I might wish for myself. I think so. All right, Ray?
Okay, our last case is Alexa Realty LLC. Eighty-four eleven Venter Avenue, three North Jerome Avenue, block two twelve point zero one, lots eighteen and twenty-eight, located in the C1 and S25 zoning district, seeking subdivision approval, together with certain C variance relief and D variance relief in order to subdivide and adjust the lot lines of the existing parcels into four newly configured lots and for the approval of three new single-family residences along Jerome Avenue, current on taxes, water, and sewer payments, proof of advertising with, and notification provided, represented by Eric Goldstein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. McLaren. This application...
Oh, 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 you want to do your report? And, no, I think he needs, I think we need some house cleaning items.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, Mr. McLaren and I, and with Mr. Manos' permission, spoke today regarding the application itself with regard to the subdivision, which is C variance relief necessary and depending on how we look at the subdivision, being a major or minor, versus another use variance for residential and the commercial zone. Because there are a lot of moving parts with regard to the sizes of the lots, the lot line reconfiguration, well, Mr. McLaren and Mr. Manos and I just went back and forth on email and Mr. Barnhart as well, is that we're seeking only tonight, we're not, this isn't really bifurcated for one meeting. We're seeking only tonight the D variance to determine if the new construction could be residential, not commercial. In the event the board votes in the affirmative, then we're going to come back, we have to apply for some waivers and submit perhaps a new plan for the subdivision. But it's very similar to the prior case where we're just seeking the ability to use the property in a residential manner. If that doesn't pass, then I guess we're kind of, come back to the, to the board, maybe, or we'll go back to the drawing board. So I think I said that correctly, Roger, we're just seeking the D use variance tonight, subdivision...
Or lot eighteen, or twenty-eight, right?
Correct. To make the lots along Jerome Avenue residential, single-family.
Three lots.
Correct. Three se, I'm sorry.
Well, three new lots, but they're re-subdividing the existing lot eighteen, so it's in essence four new lots. They're, they're adding a hundred square feet to it, so you're, you're in essence, but there's no new streets, so it's... The, the other question I have or comment is in 2022, that this was site plan approved, final preliminary site plan approval, to use those lots for the parking of the corner property. So granting a use variance would negate that, correct? So it's an amended site plan next time also?
Yeah.
Right.
That's correct.
A subdivision and amended site plan if they get the use variance.
And, and John's going to talk to the fact that it's a major or minor, we're still a little confused about that, but Mr. Seganos, who owns the property, said before we go, get that deep into where the lots will actually be and the actual homes that will go there presumably, wanted us to, to come in first just for the single variance of the use. And maybe John can get into that a little bit when he starts his testimony.
I mean, the requirements for the minor versus the major aren't that great, you're going to ask for a lot of waivers on that.
Yeah.
Regardless.
Okay. Look, if it's a major, it's a major. We're fine. So I don't know if you want to just have John start talking about the, the use, or if you want to go through your report, we're good either way, we agree with your report. It's up to you.
I'll just, I'll lead into this. So the master plan, this lot, which was eighteen, used to be within the S25 zoning district. The master plan recommended, with the planning board extending that into the C1 to match the corner property, hoping that the commercial site would, would expand. And actually, in 2022, it was expanded by utilizing that lot for the residential parking above the corner property and the commercial property parking below. So now that would go away if this is developed as a single-family residential. So I'll stop there.
Okay.
Put on your criteria.
Thank you, Mr. McLaren, Mr. Chairman. John Barnhart, licensed professional planner, professional engineer is with me. We're going to discuss just tonight the potential for the use along Jerome Avenue. The building itself on the corner of Venter and Jerome is going to remain, that's Barrels, everyone knows it's Barrels. But if the lots, as we go down Jerome, the requested use is going to be residential. We do believe that fits into the character of the neighborhood, but I'm just a lawyer. John can explain that a little better, so... Barely a lawyer.
Can I just add one question, clarification real quick? That building is actually more than just one business though, right?
It's Barrels and it's the fitness center and there's a clothing store on the side on Jerome.
So there's three, not just one?
Correct. Yeah. All right, John? You've been sworn previously, but Mr. Manos has swayed for this application as well.
Okay, Mr. Barnhart, just please raise your right hand, you swear from the testimony you'll give this evening, it'll be the truth.
I do.
Okay, and we've previously qualified you as an engineer and planner, so you're good to go on that.
All right. All right, John, take it away. I guess this microphone is just not working, I tried to get it on.
I can, I can just, so... It's, it's acting like it's on, but it, nothing's coming out.
All right. So I'm sure everybody's extremely familiar with this property, sits right on the corner of Jerome Avenue and Venter Avenue. The site is actually, it's actually two separate lots as it exists. The corner property of Jerome Avenue and Venter Avenue is where the existing building sits that has ground floor, commercial. And as we just discussed, I think it's broken up into three, three, three individual rental spaces. And as we just discussed, I think it's broken up into three, three individual rental spaces at this point. And then there are, there are two small residential units on top of that structure. And then behind that, there is, there's a second lot, which is, which has a, has two buildings on it. One is a residential unit with ground floor storage, and the other is a residential unit. Those structures have existed for many years. Beyond that is an asphalt surface that is on and off use for parking. So, just to give some of the folks who are newer on the board a little bit of history of this property, I'm sure you know the property or watched it over the years, but this property sat kind of foul for a little while, not, and with a number of developers looking at it and trying to decide, you know, what was the highest, the best use of the property. Many of the, of the clients that came to us and actually had some pre-application meetings with the board, were trying to redevelop this property entirely as residential. And the sentiment of the, of the board and, and those pre-application meetings was that that was not appropriate for the location, that you wanted to preserve the commercial at this location. Fast forward a few years, Mr. Seganos, who we all know is a very successful commercial business operator and tenant for, for all types of different retail, restaurant, and entertainment uses, purchased the property and recognized the value in the commercial of the building that was there. We came forward with Mr. Seganos a couple of years ago and obtained an approval that Mr. McLaren just discussed, which, and what that approval did is there were some other buildings actually over here that Mr. Seganos torn down, they were little residential units as well. He tore those down, and we came in and we got an approval to allow this, the existing commercial structure to have ground floor commercial as it, as it did for many years. There were some, there were two small residential units built on the second level, not by Mr. Seganos, they were there. And we, we got those legalized, they were built, and, and I don't know, I don't think they were actually ever even occupied, but we got the approval to legalize those two units. And then we also identified the two residential units that existed and kind of got, I'll call it legalized, but just kind of reaffirmed those residential units that existed. And then there was some parking to be developed in the rear that Mr. McLaren discussed. So, that approval, what we, what we left with, with that approval was the ground floor commercial and four residential units is, is how the site currently sits as part of that, of that site plan application. Fast forward a few years, Mr. Seganos has done a tremendous job of beautifying that building in that corner. It's absolutely magnificent what he did to it with regard to the stone finishes and the, and the lighting, and, and he's been able to find tenants to occupy the building, and it's, it's been great. What he's recognized since, since that time is that the, the units that he has in the rear are just kind of problematic for him. He never, he didn't build out the parking, but he's been fortunate enough to be successful with the commercial space without really utilizing that parking to any major, major extent. So what he then asked us to take a look at is, is there a better use for the back piece of the property other than how we got it approved? So, what he would like to do, and is, is to turn the back piece of the property, which in the prior, in the prior, your prior zoning map was in the S-twenty-five zone, as, as Mr. Clint McLaren's report points out, and then your master plan revow brought it into the commercial zoning, although it still had residential uses on it. But we now have a commercial operator that is looking at it and saying, you know, I'm doing okay with this, but to, but to expand commercial and/or try to, try to create more commercial in this area, really, from his perspective as an operator, doesn't make a lot of sense. What he's, what he would like to do is he would like to take that back property and essentially put it back to what it was in, in the S-twenty-five zoning. The reason that we think that that's an appropriate request is because if you look at the, if you look at the development of Jerome Avenue, you have us right here on the corner, the commercial space, immediately to the north of us is the synagogue, immediately to the south of us across the street is the, is the Catholic Church. Once you get beyond, once you get beyond the back of our commercial building, even behind us, you're talking, you have single-family residential. From that point, essentially, all the way to, all the way to the toll booth. So, what we're trying to do is essentially mirror what's behind us and what's on our side of Jerome Avenue with S-twenty-five zoning lots. And what that would look like is, it would be a reconfiguration of the lot line that the commercial building sits on, that's the lot line location now. We would move that over a little bit to give proper access around the commercial building. And then it would allow for four, I'm sorry, three forty-foot-wide, single-family lots that would meet all the S-twenty-five criteria, which is, as I said, which is essentially what the zoning was prior to the, prior to the master plan change. Albeit, we do understand that you had a master man, master plan change, so you had a thought that, that, that making that space commercial is what was appropriate for the community. But a little bit of time has passed at this point, and, and our client is looking at it saying, he really, he, he thinks it's a better plan, and our opinion is that it is as well, to eliminate those two kind of non-conforming residential buildings that really are out of character with the neighborhood and the single-family nature of Jerome Avenue once you get past the commercial building and build three nice properties, this, that, this site would be fully built out at that point and would, we think, fit very, very well into this neighborhood. So, that's kind of the, the long and short of how we've arrived at where we are this evening. As Eric pointed out, the only thing that we are requesting for this evening is the use variance, essentially to allow this rear property area that is currently commercially zoned to be allowed to have single-family homes constructed upon.
And we have to come back, if the board agrees, to then show you architectures of what those homes would look like, to show you how it's going to affect the existing commercial, to show you the curb cuts. This, of course, is on two county roads, on both Jerome and on Venter Avenue, so we have to go to the county with regard to new curb cuts off of Jerome Avenue, which potentially might be a little bit of a heavy lift. But once we determine if we can go forward, then this board can figure out what works there with regard to the size of the lots, with regard to what happens to the existing building, and then, of course, the parking over on the new to-be subdivided lots. That's really it, we have the positive and negative for the change of use, but nothing else for tonight. Yeah, I was gonna ask, so having said that, John is gonna describe the reasons for the D-variance, because we need to show...
So, with regards to the D-variance, obviously, we have to show purposes of zoning that are advanced, and then establish the negative criteria as well. We believe that the purposes of zoning that are advanced in this application are that, first, we believe that this application would promote the general welfare, because we believe that this, this portion of the property is particularly well-suited for residential, and it is surrounded by residential in the rear and on the side. And in fact, there are two residential units that exist on the property as it sits today. We believe that although the idea of, of an expanded commercial, maybe this commercial space gets a bit bigger along Jerome Avenue, commercial is, it's, it's hard to keep viable commercial, especially in an area such as this where there's not a critical mass of commercial. When you get onto Venter Avenue and other areas and you have store after store, and you have folks that are gonna be walking down the street and pedestrians, and there's a lot of activity, you know, there might be other restaurants in the area that bring people, then commercial becomes more viable. This building is kind of a one-off type of building where I've got a church on one side, I've got a synagogue on the other side, and then the rest of what's around me is houses. So, it's, it's, it's a destination commercial, so, you know, there's a restaurant in there, you wanna go to the restaurant, you're gonna go there. To go there, you might go, if the other is a yoga studio, it's again, it's a destination. But the idea to be able to expand upon the commercial when you're really not gonna be able to create any additional critical mass of commercial, because the balance of the area is residential, is what we think kind of hamstrings this from being a commercial property, so...
John, you know, at the same time that we made that commercial specifically that lot, we also made the church property institutional, so there'd be no houses over there either. That in the future, if by chance churches close or combine or whatever, we change that too, saying that whole corner on both sides would be commercial. So it wasn't just these three lots.
Okay, thank you for that. So, again, I, I believe that, that this application does promote the general welfare, because this, this piece of, this parcel within the parcel is particularly well-suited for this specific use. We also believe that this application promotes the creation of appropriate population densities. Although the units are very small, we're getting rid of two residential units and then building three single-family units that would comply in all respects to the S-twenty-five, which is the surrounding, the surrounding zoning of the other properties that are beyond our site.
Are you getting rid of the two units on top of the property?
The, the, we are not proposing at this time to get rid of those two units.
But you're getting rid of the parking for them?
We are.
And that would be part of an amended site plan, Mr. Patterson, so nothing gets built there without us coming back and getting it approved. The concept of the change in use is really what we're talking about, without something to look at. I understand we're getting rid of the parking for what exists, but without getting the major... I guess that would be an amended, is that amended major site plan, Roger?
Uh, yes.
Without getting that approved, none of this happened, so this is step one.
How can we vote for a change of use? Or we can vote for a change of use, but what are you gonna do with the parking? When this project was approved in two thousand twenty-two, number seven says, "The applicant is proposing to revamp the parking area with a new service and improved landscaping and buffering. The curb cut along Jerome Avenue will be relocated slightly." Did that ever happen? I don't think so. And, did it?
No.
No. And eleven parking spots will be delineated in the parking area for commercial uses, one of which will be a handicap parking spot, and four parking spaces will be delineated for the two existing one-bedroom residential structures, which I'm assuming are on top of the commercial. Is that correct?
Yes.
Right, and then the, then the, whatever it is, that has two spots. So, if we change the use on that, we're, are you gonna buy another lot somewhere else for the parking? I mean, what's gonna happen with the parking?
You all right?
You all right?
So, what's gonna happen with the parking?
One of two things, Mr. Chairman. First, you could condition the approval on the elimination of the residential units above. I think that seems to make the most, are you okay, Craig? Seems like a bad cram. We could, you wanna take a break? So that, that would be one option to eliminate the apartments above in the event of...
Yeah, but that only takes cares, that only takes care of four spots. You still have the eleven spots in two thousand twenty-two, which wasn't like it was ten years ago, it was like, I don't know, whenever. Great, so, you know, that, that, that's really my main gripe with the whole project.
Understood.
If you build houses there, then you've got your curb cuts and everything, and you're taking away more street parking too. That corner, that, those, those commercial things get really busy in a summer.
That's a, that's a good point.
You know, and there's, and there's so many more people parking on the street compared to all the houses and everything, but there's no place to park, and it's gonna take the business. I can think of barrels if they don't have parking.
It's a busy corner.
Okay, anybody else from the board?
Is that, isn't there a gym in there, in that building?
Yeah.
A gym?
Yeah.
There's a gym.
I guess, I've never been there.
Clothing store, gym.
Yeah.
Bar, yoga, Pilates.
Right. Okay, all right, so anything else from the board?
Just one thing, Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Go ahead.
Without knowing why it was changed in two thousand seventeen, I think it was not accurate in that it was changed from S-twenty-five to...
Commercial.
Commercial.
Right.
Without knowing the reasonings for it, or members of the time that did that.
Well, Ri- Rich just said the reason. Say, you wanna say anything?
That was the main reason, that was the one and only reason.
What?
Why we changed it to commercial from S-twenty-five?
To encourage continued commercial use.
Yeah, and changing across the street, if the church ever went away, that it'd be commercial over there too and not houses.
Right, right.
And to extend the commercial use down there. He didn't knock my stocks off at the time, because if you use his logic, we might as well make the whole thing residential, because it's residential all the way down to the bridge.
Well, it would have to stop someplace, the corner seems like a logical spot.
Yeah, I just think one...
Yeah, that's, that's a good question.
But I think another, another argument, and see what the board's headed here, is the fact that the board wanted to, or the municipality, when it changed the zone, wanted to encourage more commercial, you know, respectfully, it hasn't worked, because it hasn't, over the course of however many years this property has been in need of development, probably over ten, nothing's come close to being built there. Mr. Seganos hasn't had the property that long. Prior to that, it just sat, there was an old, like, shed that was dilapidated. It just seems like everything that's been there hasn't...
Well, they put up a big sign, condos coming next week or whatever. There was a giant sign in the building, they were gonna do it all residential without even coming to us.
There was, I remember that. That wasn't, that was a...
No, I know, I know.
It was the, yeah.
So, I mean, frankly speaking, I, I'm not totally opposed to maybe some residential there, but I am very opposed to eliminating the parking for what was approved three years ago. That's my opinion.
I understand, and we're trying to figure out how to make that work, Mr. Richmond.
Well, I don't know how you make it work.
All right. I think I have an idea, because we don't wanna get a no vote on a D. Maybe we table this respectfully, go back to the drawing board, ask the board to retain jurisdiction. If we have to come back, we'll re-notice and re-advertise. We don't wanna have to file a whole new application if we can come up with a better plan. But this is what we came up with to date. It doesn't seem like the board members are really liking it that much. And in order to get an approval, we need five of you to like it that much. So, it's important that we do this correctly. And Mr. Seganos, I'm sure, will agree that it's not about forcing something down the board's throat, but it's about getting a plan that can work better, and it sounds like the parking is the big issue with the board.
Well, I, I wouldn't, that's my biggest issue, that's not everybody's biggest.
Well, it seems like it's everybody's, like, that's a, it's a problem.
I think that, plus changing it back to S-twenty-five, we had good reasons to change it, not, change it to commercial and, you know, make it available for commercial. I, I wouldn't compare it to like Douglas Avenue where nothing was happening, and it was a dead zone, whatever.
I don't know, Mr. Patterson.
It's got viable businesses right there. And I'm not him to say, yes, you can expand it and put two stores in, but that was our hope would happen.
What you had is Mr. Seganos...
This doesn't change.
Bought Barrels, which was an existing business, put in clothing store and the fitness studio, but it's not as if there's a big call for commercial along this area, because if there were, it would be there.
Yeah, you haven't tried anything. That does have the potential to be a flourishing thing, because I look around here, Mr. Patterson probably remember, there was a gas station there at one time, a real long time ago, and a library there.
Library, yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
So, putting commercial there, you know, there's a church and there's a synagogue, and probably a breakfast restaurant would serve great.
But that, that's, I, I know what you're saying, but, you know, you have to leave it up to the developers what they wanna put there, but that, that was the intent when we changed it.
Understood.
So it's more than just the parking. We're gonna show you know if you're gonna come back later, then don't just address the park.
If they wanna come back, I, I'm fully in agreement with that. I mean, I guess if we, if we vote on it and deny it, then that puts them in a tough spot. And then if we vote on it and say, oh yeah, we're, we're approving residential for this lot, and then they have to come back, the board might be a little pigeonholed when you say, well, you lost all that commercial, so, but, but you already approved residential. You, 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 you sort of know that when you're approving the residential, so, yeah, that made sense.
So we're just gonna withdraw for tonight, testimony is the testimony, John's testimony still stands. Go back to Mr. Seganos, maybe go back to the drawing board, figure something out. I do think, however, with all due respect, the idea that commercial is going to increase in this area is not necessarily gonna carry. Commercial unfortunately is going away, and I know the board wants to hold on and keep saying, we have to protect our commercial, but what you're protecting are empty lots right now. Nothing's gonna get built there, so is it better to have the, have the concept, idea of protecting commercial or put something there in tastefully designed homes that actually will work? I think it's the latter. But again, I'm just a lawyer, I don't know. Right now, it's nothing. Right now, it's nothing.
All right, so you're gonna come back?
Correct.
I think that's a good idea.
Just one comment is, section one seventy-five dash thirty-six, off-street parking. Section A, minimum required off-street parking scheduled for non-residential uses. The number of off-street parking spaces shall be, shall be required for any non-residential use shall be determined by, of course, as we know. Then it goes down a little bit further. CBD, C-one, C-two, waterfront, special district, and repairing zones. However, existing parking must be maintained. So, what that does, if somebody comes in, builds a parking lot, or like you did in two thousand twenty-two, if you read this, he nearly can't get rid of that. But you're seeking the parking variance, so...
Good enough for now. All right. Thanks.
Do we have any other business?
Uh, just one comment, I think John Pitts and I and whoever else, we're gonna start looking at redeveloping that ground floor parking being open again, we're gonna start looking, John's gonna do some laywork and present something to us. Get back on that.
All righty. All right, I'm gonna make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Anybody second it? Small favor?